Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lake County Board of Supervisors meeting for August 22nd, 2023. We'll call the meeting to order and start with a moment of silence. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, I'd like to offer a moment of silence for Catherine Perry. She was from Upper Lake but also moved to Lakeport as well. And she was an intricate person to help with the Tango Mike. I've seen her there quite a few times. And I know she worked with Ginny frequently, lots of volunteer hours, lots of donations as well. I remember standing in front and handing checks to Ginny. So very upstanding citizen of the community, volunteering hours. And so she'll greatly be missed and we offer condolences to her family.
Thank you. Stephen Carter, you want to lead us in the pledge?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any extra items not posted on the agenda?
We do. We have one request, extra item from CDD, and it's not working.
It's working. There we go.
Okay.
Turn it over to Maria.
Thank you. Maria Turner, Community Development Director. We request this extra item today. It was inadvertently omitted from the last board agenda. And the deadline, this is a request to approve the submission of a grant application. And the application is due to the state by next Tuesday, which is a special meeting for the board. And so we'd appreciate if we could have this taken up today.
Okay. Any comments from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
Just a question, since we do have that special meeting and it's due, it's due by 5:00 PM on 8/29?
I believe so.
And I take it that based on our decision, it might take you more than 24 hours to finalize and finish up what you need to do?
It would be beneficial if we did have that option.
Okay.
Any public input on the reasoning for this item? I'm not in Zoom yet.
You want me to open Zoom?
Johann, anyone in Zoom?
Nope.
Okay. All right, I'll bring it back to the board for action. Supervisor Sabatier?
Madam Chair, due to the timing of the posting of the agenda and the need to finalize the grant prior to 8/29, I move to approve the extra item on the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. So we will get to 4.1 a little bit later. Item five, approval of consent agenda. Do we have any items that we wish to pull? Supervisor Sabatier?
Madam Chair, I'd like to remove further conversation, 5.1 and 5.2.
Okay, anyone else?
And we would like to also pull 5.3 and item 5.4 and continue those two until September 12th, BOs meeting.
Continue 3 and 4. Okay. Does anyone from the public have an item they wish to pull? Anyone in Zoom?
Still connecting.
Oh, okay. All right. Then, action?
Further, I move, we approve the consent agenda with the exception of items 5.1, 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Okay, 6.1, our 9:06 AM item, public input. We have a few forms filled out here. So I will call up first Joan Moss. And you can come up to the podium, state your name, and have three minutes.
Thank you. I used a lot of phone research for this yesterday between 4:00 and 5:00. I was trying to reach the Lake County Sheriff's press number. I found the number 262-4200. I want to announce that Lauren did talk to me just before 5:00, and she confirmed the anonymous information I had been receiving from jail inmates and parents of the inmates. Lake County Sheriff's press release confirmed anonymous impact report that the Lake County Jail does have a few cases of COVID in the jail. These cases have been quarantined and are being monitored carefully by the staff. So that's in it. We don't hear about COVID much. The radio station I called had already heard this. I'm not the only one that got the information, but I did get it confirmed by Lauren. And I found out after many tries that her number is 707-262-4200. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do know that the Sheriff's Office put out a press release on Facebook yesterday about this item.
Madam Chair, do you mind if I ask, Sam, I'm hearing a very distinct sound coming out of that microphone. I'm not sure if there's some interference with maybe a hearing aid or something like that, but it's a very loud pitched sound that came from that microphone. Anyone else hear that? Or am I the only one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the next one we have is Ms. Mindy Vaughn from Lucerne about the warming shelter. Okay. Who wants to go first? Yvonne? All right, Yvonne Cox?
Good morning, Yvonne Cox. I was the Director of the Warming Shelter. I feel I have a moral obligation to tell you what has been brought to me. And I hope that you don't know about this, because if you do, I'm ashamed of all of you. I was, it was brought to my attention that they had fired somebody in the high ranks. And when she's, this person was fired for performance, like I was. And when she was fired, she said, well, you should fire Chris Bloodworth because he's been sleeping in the office with the domestic violence lady that came in. And his ex-wife, or his wife, with the child, has been coming there wanting to fight her. So he was demoted back to security. Now, to me, this is ludicrous. If somebody's doing something so vile as preying on someone that is very vulnerable, how are you guys making sure that they are safe? There's nobody there with credentials, education, or experience to be running that place. Okay, for instance, they put Mr. Bloodworth as back in security. They put Nicole Peggan as the Director. She was on a 14-day suspension from meat for mold and inappropriate behavior, complaints on the food. Annie Barnes had wrote her up seven times, and I'm sure those papers have disappeared. And she had told me the Thursday before I was released, how come you haven't fired that B-girl? And I said, because I'm the only one besides her with the food handlers, and I need help. I was coming in early preparing the food, so all Nicole had to do was serve it. So now we have this circus going on. We have Mr. Ava coming in one day a week to run a shelter. You think that's adequate? One day, for $5,000, and people complained about me working my butt off 14, 16, and sometimes 24-hour shifts, making sure that we were in compliance. Every time you were there and you came in and inspected, I was always complimented on it being clean and compliant, and the food was wonderful, and it smelled great. So now here we are, having people at risk. They have been serving spaghetti for four days, I was told yesterday by a staff member. Four days. Would you eat spaghetti on the fourth day? Bacteria grows, whether it's in the refrigerator or not. After two days, I'd say throw it out. So there's that. Also, I was asked to be in a documentary about the homeless. And when we were filming, several people came running up to me, hugging me, saying, oh my God, it's not safe there anymore. I don't go there unless I absolutely have to. I think you need to look into this, and I hope the grand jury's listening, and I hope the DA's listening, because when you put someone in the position-
Your time is up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Mindy Vaughn?
Yes, my name is Mindy Maisel Vaughn. I left Red Tag property in Clear Lake and came to the shelter. When I arrived there, everything was okay. When she was there, staff were setting rules with her guidance and her strong arm, but when she was not there, the staff was just totally unruly. I left there the first week, excuse me, the last week of April because I couldn't stand the devil's standards from the staff. Uneducated, ill-informed, and also knowingly doing drugs, the staff, while I was there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Linda Oliver?
Diane Olivier. Thank you very much.
Hello. I have been a resident of, I don't consider myself homeless. I consider myself residentially challenged since my home burned down on August 10th of last year. My mom died on the 14th. And even though it's here, you don't have that much to go to. I do have a bachelor's in criminal justice. I do have my food management certificate. I guess I just don't have that much confidence. But I have this much confidence in the fact that it is ill-managely run. And if you don't take into consideration the people that did this, albeit of the good of their heart, without any kind of degree or anything, but just compassion, then you're not taking into consideration what actually has happened there. You're using that maybe as a platform. You realize that my daughter was incarcerated there for four months because she did not talk about somebody. This is what we do. We don't tell. This is what we've all done. Now, what I'm taking into consideration is I'm hoping that you learn that I am incarcerated, basically, in that cell, reminding myself every day what my daughter went through, just to keep her mouth shut for all of these things to happen. Now, these women, we know that stuff. Okay? I do have my degree. But I also know what it's like to be silenced and be scared. I'm in there right now. There is a man that just molested me. He is also in there. He didn't, and they said, well, it didn't happen here. No, it did not happen on your property. But the fact that you're not keeping me safe, that is a definite non-plus. And I'm shaking right now because I'm afraid of that guy. I'm afraid of that guy and the guy before them. I am afraid of those people. Now, I know it's not a women's shelter, but something has to be done. Because when we're at our lowest point, usually we're running from something. I would just like you to understand that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll take a two-minute break. Okay, 6.2, our 9:07 AM item, Pet of the Week. We have Animal Care and Control.
Good morning. I'm Officer Sadie Egan with Lake County Animal Care and Control. With me today is Rosie. She is a very upbeat, two-year-old terrier mix who loves to play in the water. She has been with us since June 30th. She is very treat motivated. She knows a few commands. She knows how to fetch, sit, and shake. When she's all done playing, all she wants to do is lay in your lap for some cuddles. Thank you. Any questions?
Is it Rosie or Roadie?
Rosie.
Rosie.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much for coming.
I just want one second.
Okay, 6.3, our 9:08 item, new and noteworthy at the library. And we have Director Veach.
Hello. This is Christopher Veach, County Librarian. Thank you so much for giving me just a few minutes to talk about what's new and noteworthy at the library. This month, I wanted to highlight a very popular fiction title right now in the library system, Tom Lake by Anne Patchett. This is the latest from Anne Patchett, who has won many literary awards, including the Pen Faulkner Award in 2002. And Tom Lake is described by the library's novelist service as being character-driven, heart-wrenching, and richly detailed. It follows a mother and her daughters in northern Michigan, and the novel details the mother recalling the past at her daughter's request, telling them the story of a famous actor with whom she shared both a stage and a romance, which causes her daughters to examine their own lives and reconsider the world and everything they thought they knew. And this book just came out recently, and it's incredibly popular in the library system. It has over 500 requests in all of its different formats. And you can request this book as an ebook, audiobook, or print copy through our online library catalog, which has the combined resources of Lake Sonoma and Mendocino County library systems. And requesting items is completely free to library patrons, and items are sent to your local branch for you to pick up. And for county residents who can't make it to the library for mobility or transportation reasons, you can also sign up to receive print books and DVDs through the U.S. Postal Service with our Books by Mail program. Just call your local branch to sign up for that. I also wanted to announce that thanks to an English-as-a-second-language grant from the state library, the county library's adult literacy program is now able to provide Mango Languages to the public for free with your library card. Mango is a language learning app and website that has courses for over 70 world languages, including Spanish and English, that you can use at your own pace on your computer, phone, or other device. This app will work hand-in-hand with our adult literacy program, which matches volunteer tutors with adults who need help with their literacy skills. Our adult literacy program focuses on teaching in English, but the ESL grant from the state is helping us expand our program to help provide further instruction to folks who are learning English as a second language. So you can learn more about the events and services available at the library at our website at library.lakcountyca.gov, or visit your local library branch in Lakeport through Lake, Middletown, or Upper Lake. You can call the main branch in Lakeport at 707-263-8817. So thanks again for listening to what's new and noteworthy at the library.
Thank you so much for that. Do we have any comments from the board?
I think that information is amazing. I want to make sure and connect that with the folks that I know that are doing GED and ESL programs, that they're aware that that's available. So thank you.
And Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah, thank you for this. Always appreciate you coming on, Christopher, and the work that you do at the libraries. And I just want to make sure, as you highlighted as you went through, that all the libraries in Lake County, you know, are supported with all the programs that are going on. So I just want to thank you very much for that and also coming on and giving those report, that when we talk about libraries, it's completely, you know, all the way around the lake. Each library is such an important asset for each one of our communities in the way that you support them and your staff to help us continue to build our library systems here in Lake County. So just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone from the public? Anyone in Zoom? No? Okay. Well, thank you for the presentation, and we look forward to seeing you next month. Thanks, Christopher.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to check in. I think I helped mess up the order of things. There was a hand up on Zoom during the public comment section. Do you mind if we ask if that person still has a comment, if it's not related to an agenda item?
Do we need to reopen public comment?
Yes. Okay. I'll go back and reopen 6.1.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I may, the suggestion would be to move to reopen public comment since it was closed, so if you're bored- So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll reopen 6.1, our 9:06 public input item. And we have a hand up in the Zoom room?
And there was a hand up from phone 6205. I just feel bad because I asked for a break, and then we moved on to the next items. I wanted to make sure that that person had the chance to speak.
6205, you can unmute, state your name, and have three minutes.
And they're not unmuting. I apologize.
Are you, I think it's Bart. Are you, Bart, did you want to give public input? Your hand was up. Okay, close public input. And we'll move on to 6.4, 9:15 AM.
My apologies, Chair Pyska. Ms. Levinson did just unmute her phone. I think it took her a second to unmute.
Your board may reopen public comment again with another motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 6.1.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you so much. I'm so honored that you did this. Thank you, Bruno. I actually have been trying to call admin and let you guys know that online, where you can click on the meeting in progress, the screen is blank. So I'm able to hear you online through, excuse me, on the phone through Zoom, but I cannot access the meeting on screen through Legis使or or Granicus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's live on Granicus. Okay. There might be some connectivity issues with the caller, but it does-
It's frozen, and that's moving.
Yeah, we're live on Granicus. No?
It's playing fine.
Yes. Okay. Thank you, Sam. Thank you, Johanna. Okay, 6.4, 9:15 AM. A. Consideration of Letter Requesting California Department of Public Health Reconsider State Approval of Any Positive Changes Application to Provide Syringe Service in Lake County and B. Discussion on Other Options in Response to Letter and Direct Staff. And this is Supervisors Crandall and Sabatier.
So I'll go ahead and start it off. I believe it was around May 5th, there was a letter that was received by our local law enforcement and our public health officer. August 3rd is when the county received, and sorry, the May 5th letter stated that there was going to be a consultation period in regards to any positive change becoming a state-permitted syringe exchange program. On August 3rd, there was a letter that was received that this had been fully approved. And to be honest, that was the very first time that I had heard of the consultation period. There was responses from our public health officer, as well as our local law enforcement. I quoted some of those statements within the letter that was drafted between myself, Supervisor Crandall, and with the help of county council. And none of the comments that were received were taken into consideration. Some of those comments, just to summarize, our public health officer commented about the request from the Board of Supervisors to do a MOU with any positive change, stating that they were close, they had had meetings about it, and that he would prefer to continue that process of finalizing an MOU. And our law enforcement had concerns about the exchange of syringes within homeless encampments, and as well as other concerns that they shared. Again, none of those comments were taken into consideration. CDPH provided a letter saying that they are permitted to do exactly the things that our law enforcement were concerned about, also ignoring our public health officer's request. This letter has nothing to do with any positive change as an entity. This has to do with the fact that we had a process on how to move forward, to keep local control, to hold accountability, to watch how this program went about in our community. And with the state taking it over, we have absolutely zero ability to do any of those things. And so the letter is requesting a reconsideration by California Department of Public Health to have meaningful consultation with our law enforcement and our public health officer. And again, because of the fact that nobody on this board, that I'm aware of, at least I wasn't, wasn't aware until after California Department of Public Health approved this permit, that the public themselves, who have been showing up at our Board of Supervisors meeting, whether they would support it or not support it, were not able to provide that public comment, since that knowledge was not made available to the greater public. So that is what I have to say, and I'll pass it on to Supervisor Crandall.
Yes, when we got the letter on the second, like conducting a termination from any positive change, I wondered why we weren't notified of it. There was a statement that law enforcement from the municipalities and the sheriff was. And so I was confused, because commonly we would get something as well. And so I've been working with public health, trying to initiate an MOU with the local provider, to just mitigate some things. It wasn't about denying or anything like that. It was really trying to get to a point of how can we make this work so we can address some of the concerns of the community and maybe, you know, figure out some solutions, that's all. And it's been an ongoing thing in, of course, the Lucerne area town hall and the Central Region Town Hall, I want to say, since late 2021. And so I just, I just feel that the folks that have been coming forward, have been going to those meetings, didn't have really an opportunity to the state to talk about these things, or have the opportunity to go to public comment wherever this meeting was and state their concerns. Local businesses have reached out to me about this consistently, and I kept telling them, when we bring it to the board for the MOU, whatever the case may be, that's our time. And so here we are. And there's a letter to basically say, no, this is what's happening from the state, and that's how it's going to be. It's kind of just disconcerting. So just wanted to ask them to reconsider, listen to us. You know, it's obviously their decision, but just take into consideration. It's kind of the same thing we deal with on other issues when it comes to Lake County and other entities infringing on our, you know, not only, not- know, not only not authority, but just our process. So, you know, there's a lot more. But I really am focused on the letter going to the state, asking them to reconsider or listen. That's all. And yeah, I'll stop there.
My...I have a lot of concerns here because it's been quite a while since we asked staff to bring this back to us. And we have been under the assumption that there's been a process with the MOU development. And I think there's a lot...we just don't know how we got here, what happened and what didn't happen. And I want to really understand that before we send a letter to the state. Because just this letter, for me, it provides no background other than, I mean, we wrote the letter, but there's nothing to back it up. I don't know what the timeline of events were. I don't know. I haven't seen the notice. So, I am not opposed to sending it at some point, but I really need to understand how we got here. And I did reach out to a few people. I haven't heard back. And I haven't, it's really difficult to contact that doctor at CDPH to see how we got here. I feel like there's just too many unknowns today for me to support this.
I would say that my fear is the longer we wait, the less there's the ability to pull anything back.
Yeah.
And again, this is about ensuring local control rather than allowing for the state to take control over something that's occurring within our own communities. That, again, we've had public comments with concerns, whether we agree with those concerns or not, how do we work together to alleviate those concerns rather than just push with the power of the state to say your concerns don't matter?
I don't disagree with that at all. But I want to make sure that we've done everything the way that we have supposed to have done it. And I wouldn't want to get in a position where we're making, sending this letter and there's something that we didn't do. Or there was, you know, a ball dropped somewhere along the way. That's why I want to make sure that I clearly understand everything that's happened. So, I don't disagree, but I'm just not ready today because I don't understand the timeline. We've been waiting for the MOU to be presented to us. I think that there's a lot that we need to learn about what's happened and what hasn't happened.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing this forward. I know that's an important discussion, and I know we're going to be taking some public comment on that. So, I'm going to keep my comments at this point pretty brief. I also hesitate sending this letter. I think it presents certain facts adequately. I think it may not fully explain this whole process such as it is. And to the extent we're going to assert local control issues, it's pretty clear by the issuance of this license from CDPH that we're not the only game in town, and that the applicant in question clearly wasn't that into the current arrangement. And whatever the status of the MOU may or may not have been, it seems like that ship has sailed. I don't think any form of informal letter is going to have one bit of influence on CDPH in terms of reconsidering its issuance of the license, given the substantial evidence that supported not only the existing program, but now the state license program, of just how dire the situation here is in Lake County regarding the use of injectable drugs and syringe exchange programs. And I also disagree somewhat with a statement like, this has nothing to do with anything but change, any positive change. I think it has everything to do with that particular vendor. I am interested in growing capacity. I do think there is a process in here of consultation that could be useful if all people were committed to coming to the table and talking about solutions. When we do come to number B on there, discussion of other options, I would certainly support a referral to Emergency Medical Care Committee, bounce some ideas around. To the extent local law enforcement or other local agencies may give a one, may want to give input, it often is like real estate, location, location, location. It's not about whether the services should be provided. There's generally a pretty good agreement that that needs to happen. But there is often substantial disagreement about the best time, place, and manner to do that. So, I do want to hear from the people here to give insights. But what I'm looking for is not kind of reconsidering what has happened, but looking forward. And if we can drill down and create a process so that future providers of syringe exchange services could be encouraged to deal with the county versus going to the state, and could be encouraged to reach a collaborative MOU, fully informed by all the agencies. You know, that's something we can certainly work toward, and I think EMCC is a perfect place to start that work. But trying to unring the bell and trying to unpack two years of history on this particular provider and this particular licensing arrangement, she chose to pivot. She chose to go to the state. It was a, as far as I can tell, a reasonably comprehensive outreach. And if there was a lack of engagement on the part of some of our people, you know, that's on us. So, anyway, looking forward to the discussion. Not super supportive of this letter moving forward today, but supportive of discussions aimed at looking forward, possibly growing capacity with other providers.
Yeah, I think at this point, for myself also, is understanding from our directors who are involved with this process, you know, how we got here. We know that there are passions on both sides of this issue. But we also know, just as Supervisor Green said, we have a serious issue here in Lake County with injectable drugs, other things that are happening, you know, all left over from the opioid epidemics as we move through that process. Even as we are talking about our settlements, making sure we're tracking and understand the issues that we have, you know, from my point of view, yeah, I want to hear the public comments today as we move forward. But continuing cooperation to make sure that we are trying to work with our most vulnerable folks in this county. You know, I can't say it's not happening because it is. And the needle exchange program, I think, throughout the county is an important issue. And we just need to continue those conversations and understand how we got there at this point. But making sure that we support all avenues as we're moving forward. Because we know that until someone wants to make a decision and a change in their life, to get off of opioids or any of the other drugs that are out there right now, we need to have a meaningful way that we can keep them as healthy as possible until they make that decision. So, those are my thoughts on it today, too. I think it's a little early to send off a letter, and I'd like to hear the comments today.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, and I apologize, I failed to put in the original letter. But the original letter that was sent to, again, all law enforcement and to Carl Sporer, our current PHO, says any positive change has applied to the California Department of Public Health. And then again, the comments from PHO were that meetings were occurring for the MOU and that they were not far apart. And so, obviously, there was a better outcome to go to the state than continuing to work with the county, again, taking away our ability to hold accountable ourselves and to control the situation in the ways that we need it for our community rather than releasing it to the state. So, to me, that says everything that we need to know.
Supervisor Crandall?
I'll keep this brief. I know we have people here to speak on this, but I wanted to kind of help with somewhat of a timeline. This came forward, I want to say, in late 21. We were supposed to reconsider and meet. There was some concerns about some requirements according to state law that I know I brought up. That never, I think eventually it was brought forward. But the concerns were mainly because of pipes being passed out, things like that. So, we wanted to make sure they were in accordance with the state law. That was my concern. It wasn't about the situation or who it was or anything. And then, there was really no good faith effort to come and talk with us about a MOU, whether it be public health, us, or anything of the like. It was always brushed off and avoided, and it put us in a position to constantly have people coming forward and accentuate how their feelings are about this. Their comments and their concerns were never taken into consideration. And it's basically like, and it was exalted in their face as if, you know, we don't have to do anything like that. So, you know, I do somewhat agree with Michael Green, Supervisor Green, that it somewhat is, but that's the only contractor we have. And when we have contractors, we want them to work with us. That's commonly what we will want. And so, I don't feel it's about the program, the syringe exchange program. It's about the actions and the lack of compliance. And when we ask for it, we don't get it. We're just, you know, kind of shined on. And so, I think for me and the state to give these types of concessions to a group that is recalcitrant against the county, there is actually some stats that are inaccurate. According to the, let me find it real quick here. So, according to some of the surveillance reports and whatnot, the lake has decreased 75% since 2017 in regards to HIV. They're stating that there's been an increase. There's on Table 2C of this same report, there's been no fluctuations. Out of the 143 cases in Lake County, 120 require no care. 2018 and 19 were the highest numbers, 2021 and 17 were the lowest. So, I just feel they're using some numbers that aren't necessarily accurate or not explained to us. And so, that's why I feel the need to have a comment with the California Department of Public Health rather than just kind of it being infringed on us. The same concerns that I had when we were given the stats from 2018, and it was 2021, from the contractor. So, that's not necessarily a timeline. I do agree, there probably should have been something listed out that way. But I know for a fact that that's been one thing that I've constantly been going back and forth with public health to talk about. Is the MOU ready? Has anyone come forward? No, they don't like, they don't like it. They're having legal review it, things like that. So, and then to see the letter, it's like, wait, there's no good faith effort to meet and confer with us about this. So, I'll leave it at that, and I know that there's people here to speak on it.
Okay, we'll open up public comment. Oh, Supervisor Green?
I just want to highlight, not to be combative, but this is not like commercial cannabis, which has a dual licensing system that requires local approval and state licensing before stuff happens. There's no meet and confer requirement, whether we issue the license or whether they get the license through the state. There is a consultation discussion with local law enforcement for any CDPH issued license. And those licenses can only be issued by CDPH in certain really high-impacted areas. Well, guess what? Lake County is a very, very impacted area. So, they have the ability to do that. So, if a future provider or the current provider doesn't want to do an MOU, there's no provision of state or local law that forces them to do that. We can ask them to do that out of their good graces, but they don't have to buy what we're selling. And, you know, we can talk about what happened or didn't happen with the MOU, but if any positive change wasn't interested, end of story. They didn't have to sign up for that. And in fact, they didn't sign up for that. They chose to go in a different direction with the state that doesn't require an MOU. And one reason the state places such an emphasis on this is because they have to deal with the most extreme of high-risk situations and some assertions from time to time of local control. It gets complicated and stuff like that. So, I just want to be clear that I'm not aware of anything that would have compelled consideration or passage of an MOU. And it's kind of an academic argument at this place because the state license has been issued. I spoke with Anina yesterday. The MOU is a dead dodo. That's just not happening. So, just want to be clear on that.
Just real quick, there was a resolution that was passed in '08, and we were talking about addressing a new one. And that's when the MOU came up as well. And so, until this took place, there was a necessity to meet and confer about these things. And I just use that terminology because you would expect a good faith effort to talk about something where a, talk about something as the like when we're operating, when you're operating in the county, that you've asked for a resolution before. So, I understand what you're saying about the, what happened recently with the license now. But before that, we would constantly talk about meeting and talking about mitigation and, you know, things like that. So...
Okay. I'm going to open it up for public comment. But actually, first, I want to see if we have any staff in the Zoom room that would like to speak to this and how we got Not seeing any. Okay. Public comment. You can come up, have three minutes, state your name, please.
Thank you for the time, Chair and Board. Brad Rasmussen, Lakeport Police Chief. I'm going to focus my comments regarding the consultation with law enforcement that's required by, to be done by the California Department of Public Health before issuing these permits to operate. First of all, I want to make it clear that I'm not against the overall mission of any positive change. When I first, they had not operated in the city of Lakeport in past years. So, when I was first contacted on May 5th, asking if I had any comments for my agency, I did a lot of research and follow-up to include calling the California Department of Public Health, talking to their person coordinating this, and also requesting and ultimately having a meeting with Anina. And told them both that, you know, my concerns were, I wasn't against the home delivery, which at the time was the only thing proposed to happen in the city of Lakeport's jurisdiction. However, I had some serious concerns about home delivery happening at homeless camps that are illegally set up, that are trespassing on other land, that creating many other environmental issues, including water pollution, fire hazards, and things like that. I didn't want that to occur there. So, I gave written comments. I got notified they were received, but there was no further back and forth or discussion or deliberation regarding any of that. And under the law, the Health and Safety Code, that requires the CDHP to consult with local law enforcement and the public health officer. What that means, as confirmed by a recent case in the Third Appellate District of California, is that consult means not just merely take comment and then make a decision. It means have a back and forth discussion, a deliberation with law enforcement and the Department of Public Health before they make these decisions. That absolutely did not occur. It was simply, do you have comments? If so, submit them. I did. Was advised, we'll let you know when a decision's made. And two months later, August 3rd, got the letter that it was made. So, it's my opinion that they need to suspend the permit until they properly consult with local law enforcement agencies and deliberate with us regarding our concerns. They do not have to ultimately accept any of the concerns. They can make whatever decision they want. But under the law, they do have to consult and have that back and forth discussion. And again, that was just recently decided by a Third Appellate District case. Grant Park Neighborhood Association filed a case against the Department of Public Health in Santa Cruz County, and the decision came out that that's what consult means. Thank you.
Okay. Sheriff Howe?
Good morning. Thank you for your time, Board. I'm not going to rehash a lot of things that Chief Rasmussen already said. My biggest concern with this is process. I was notified of this with law enforcement. Of course, I don't know if I've mentioned this. They had the wrong email. I didn't get it actually until Chief Rasmussen sent it to me. So, thank him for that. But all in all, the process, again, is my big concern. When the state decides they're going to sidestep local input, sidestep local authority, and kind of unilaterally make these decisions, it's a concern. So, I'm very supportive and appreciate Supervisor Sabatier's and Supervisor Crandall's attempts to at least have our voices heard, whether it's now or a later day when the rest of the board feels comfortable. Obviously, that's up to the board. But again, I support and thank you all for, again, trying to get our voices heard.
Good morning, Chair Pyska, Board members Allen, Flora, C-Major.
Good morning, Chair Pace, good Board members, Alan Flora, C-Major, City of Clear Lake. Just like to request that the, the Board really carefully consider sending something to CDPH. I think Supervisor Green's comments are correct, but I don't think as a community we should accept the state just sort of blindly approving impacts in our communities without input from us. Chief Rasmussen mentioned the recent Santa Cruz case, which doesn't impact already approved permits, but I do believe does give us the opportunity to put some pressure on CDPH to more carefully consult with us and listen to our concerns. I do think there are issues with this provider. I would just want to share with the Board some experience in the city of Clear Lake. We met with any positive change probably a year and a half ago about the possibility of opening a physical location in the city. We shared that the city was unlikely to support the actual needle exchange part of that at a physical location. So there was a discussion about getting a permit to provide other services for folks that may be suffering from drug abuse. We outlined the permit process required for that type of thing. Unfortunately, that was ignored. At least was acquired, the location was up and running, providing services. We contacted them, and they eventually did stop providing services there without a permit. However, we also found out from a number of sources that they were operating a needle exchange out of that location as well. And that is not the type of behavior that we would like to partner with. Again, not that we don't support the intent behind this, but we need to have people that we can rely on and trust and make sure that we're not having other community impacts. So I know that there's been some conversations with, between the three jurisdictions. I don't want to speak for any other ones, but the city of Clear Lake is prepared to join with hopefully the county and the city of Lakeport in some type of joint letter or even as far as a demand that CDPH revisit the process consistent with the Santa Cruz decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Hobbs, Clear Lake Police Chief. Good morning, Chair and Board members. I just want to say a couple of things. A lot of it's already been mentioned by the previous three speakers, but I think some of the important things to me are that we have some type of meaningful consultation with, with the state, not just them give us the ability to write one letter or one email, disregard everything we mention and care about, and make a decision without some type of follow-up, especially to, I think, public health. The county public health has a lot of, lots to do in the county, and their involvement needs to be a lot bigger than same thing, just giving, giving something and none of their concerns being addressed. They've been working trying to get an MOU. Let them have a bigger role in this and not just the state make a decision without taking any of this input as they're required to do and have some consultation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Hello, Elise Jones, Director of Lake County Behavioral Health. I'm not in a position to comment about the specifics of how we got to this point. However, whatever decision is made, I hope that, and I can hear from the Board, I know that we all care about this unserved, underserved population that any positive change has engaged with. And it's, of course, well-established that the provision of clean syringe exchange services dramatically reduces medical issues like abscesses, communicable disease. And so I just would really encourage and hope that the Board will take action that ensures those critical services still continue to be met, because whether any positive change does it, I think they're the only game in town. And so if there's a way that we can work together to ensure that those services continue or expand, it's just my concern for the health of those people in that community. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Jones.
If I can comment to that real quick?
Sure.
So my hopes and desire is that if we do send this letter to the state and the state does reverse their decision so we can reopen up consultation, I would suspect that we would also reverse what the state told us, which is that our resolution, working with any positive change, would be back and activated so that we start over where we were before the letter from the state on August 3rd. The idea would not be to cancel everything. The idea would be to restart the process that the state did.
Anyone else?
Good morning, my name is Greg Bianchini. I live on 13th Avenue in Lucerne. I've talked with you guys before. What, the, the public and the community was never notified about this, this state approval. When, when are we going to get a chance to discuss this? I just, it was just approved without any chance to, for the community to, to discuss this whole situation. We thought the MOU was, was going forward and stuff, and I've been here multiple times. But this is very concerning that it's, it's not that you guys got stepped over, but you did get stepped over, and then our, our community too, our county, Lake County, it's a beautiful county. I know some of these people, they need help, I get it, it's all good. But the, the public, we, we need to get a chance to discuss this, this issue with, with the state approving this. And I thought you guys were all doing a pretty good job, you know? So anyways, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Do you have any further public comment? One of them?
I've been attending the Supervisors not as regular as usual, but I heard this gentleman talk every week or every other week, and he was so concerned. And I never heard any discussion or sharing of follow-up. I know you cannot talk about citizens' input during the day that citizen's input, input is given, but we need, I, I would like to see evidence of who did what to solve the problem, because this gentleman came back again and again and again. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Anyone else in the chambers? Okay, we will move to the Zoom room. Do you have hands up in the Zoom room?
We have Dr. Ray and Abba.
Go ahead, Doctor.
Good morning. Thank you for taking the time and giving me the time. Appreciate it. I just wanted to back the statements that came from Deputy Director Lewis Jones and, you know, say that these people need help. And one other point that I'd like to make is that if Lake County, which I agree, by the way, that you want to be in control of your community and all that, but we do need a comprehensive plan about substance use disorder in general, and needle exchange programs are just a small portion of, of that comprehensive plan. If you really want to take control over our community, if you want to really tell the state that we actually know what we are doing, we need to come, to have a comprehensive plan how to attack this issue. And to start with, and just pointing out a few stuff, that there is no detox residential for people that they really want to get help within the county. And there's three to four months of wait time outside of the county. So those are just a few points and, but these people, these individuals, they need our help. And from, from a personal perspective, I have years of experience in substance use disorders, and I'll be happy to provide any form of consultation or any assistance to the county, you know, with anything that I, that I can, that I can personally help you guys with to make a better informed and intelligent decision and in creating a comprehensive plan to attack this issue. Please keep in mind that the needle exchange is just a tiny portion of this, you know, attacking this substance use disorder. So while I understand and I appreciate to take control over, you know, of what we want to make a decision within our community, but I also want to make sure that we understand that if you want to go back to state, you will have a comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Do you have anyone else in the Zoom room?
Next, we have Jillian Perio.
Thank you. I just sort of been involved in this for quite a while, last couple of years, and I just wanted to request that you please, it would make sense to me to send a letter to CDPH that is factually correct, and there are a lot of facts that are not correct in the letter that you have. I happen to know that, I, I believe, because I was involved, that the last meaningful discussion on MOU with public health was in the middle of January, and there's been no more discussion than that. So whoever informed the public health officer that you were on the brink of an agreement was not correct. Also, there was a public comment that was part of the process of the state's approval of this, of this contract, and there were, I think about 170 comments, almost all of them, just about every one of them positive. I'm not sure exactly where the link was sent, but there definitely was support on the other side. And I agree with the last caller that this is a huge problem. This is a, APC is a vendor that's been doing this for almost 30 years in this county, and only in the last year and a half, due to certain circumstances, did it suddenly become an issue. And I believe that harm reduction is a, is, is a huge needle, well, this whole issue is enormous. And there were many attempts to be made on various levels, but one of them, we had a group of people that came together to have a whole discussion about stigma and how we could make sure that people are educated about harm reduction and try to take away the stigma. There's so many programs that we were all working on so diligently, and they've all just come to a complete stop. So I'm fine with having meaningful dialogue with the, with the, with the state, but I'm just requesting that we not send a letter that is full of misinformation. And Betsy Khan has a letter that is in your agenda, put on the agenda that, that really goes deep, a deep dive into what has happened along the way that I think we could learn some lessons from. And, you know, just to say that you weren't informed, they were, the process requires that the state notifies law enforcement and public health officers. So I guess I would wonder why you weren't notified by one of those people what was going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Swatier?
So I need to comment on that. I'm not quite sure what exactly is not factual. There was a process for the MOU. There was nothing that I said that one individual or the other prohibited the MOU from concluding. The information came directly from the comments provided to CDPH. I also saw the email from Betsy Khan, and there are a lot of assumptions in there as to what actually occurred that did not occur. We kept asking every single time Mr. Bianchini came to the microphone, where are we with the MOU? We kept asking. Sometimes we would ask behind closed doors and say, hey, where are we? We're still getting comments. We were told the process was still in progress, but to state, I believe there was a statement that I forcefully did not bring back an MOU is one of the most ridiculous things I've ever heard. I want to know what we expect from any positive change, and I want to know that any positive change understands what our expectations are. So those comments of false information, I guess at that point, you're basically saying that our PHO has lied to state agency. And we did have a hand up from Jonathan Portney. His hand is back down. I just want to kind of see if he's available for comments.
Director Portney?
Morning.
You get more than three minutes too, because there's a lot to unwind here.
Yeah, I'm going to be very short, and if you, if you wouldn't mind, I'll share my screen really quick, hopefully. Let's see. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
So the MOU, to the best of my and our ability, is complete. Five pages in total, but I would like to, and this is with any positive change, but I'd like to focus on one area that kind of will add value to the overall objective, which is reducing mortality in Lake County, the state with overdose drug use and other physical negative health outcomes. So looking here in section four, we're really trying, as a health department, really trying to find a way to support harm reduction. And if any positive change would be amenable, the idea would be for us to be able to collect data so that we can get to the previous caller, the doctor's overall objective is to strengthen the resources and infrastructure in Lake County to reduce mortality and provide resources to the community who are using various forms of narcotics drugs. So here, we're looking at what the health department would need to be able to apply for grants, to be able to help any positive change out of bed, they no longer choose or can operate in the county. But the idea is to collect qualitative, quantitative data in a HIPAA compliant manner to be able to strengthen the infrastructure. That said, the MOU is complete. The first MOU was signed, was signed by county, previous county council needed grants. And this second revision is complete, waiting to be signed by both parties so that we can establish a relationship. If we choose to submit a letter to CDPH, which is one of the health department's funders, so I want to be careful with the wording, but if we do choose to submit a letter to CDPH to backtrack this, I think it'd be beneficial to provide context to the health department's app so that we can better support the initiative that any positive change is trying to accomplish in the county. So in short, the MOU is complete to the best of my ability, and I would like to continue to have a relationship with any positive change to support their work with the idea that we can look at the bigger umbrella to provide more enhanced safety net within the county. Thank you.
Director Portney, when was that final draft of the MOU completed?
1/19.
January 19th?
Yes.
And I would suspect that the application to CDPH was prior to May 5th, which was when the first letter came.
Sure. So, and when did your conversations with any positive change stall out?
We're, we are still in communication. I don't, I don't believe there's a stall out. I just believe that there is a, I don't know how to word it, but I believe that there is a, I don't know how to word it, to be honest.
Okay, when did your negotiations stop on the MOU?
We're still in communication about it, but the idea is that this MOU isn't going to, that there are more than scope of work right now. So at this point, I would say that there's still hesitancy to sign, and I'm, I'm not quite sure how I can make this any more amenable to any positive change to have it be desirable for them to sign. And granted, I'm not sure that they necessarily have to sign, hence the approval from CDPH.
And when did the health department receive notice from CDPH?
We would have to have Dr. Spoor. I don't recall the exact date.
Do you have, do you have documentation of all the meetings that you could show us to show where there was progress being made or where progress stopped being made?
I can provide you with the most updated MOU, the one signed by Anita and the amended MOU. I can provide those both to you. I believe I sent copies to Mr. Carter. I can provide you that, and I can provide you any email communication I have with CDPH, Dr. Spoor, and the like.
Yep. I think it's important to collect all of that. Okay, thank you for joining us. Do we have any other public input?
We have one more hand, Guest Guest.
Okay. Guest Guest, please state your name, and you will have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Angela Emerald, and I was just calling in to say that I sup-
My name is Angela Emerald, and I was just calling in to say that I support the letter to CDPH for reconsideration. It is concerning that a letter like this was received by the public health officer, and it was not made public to allow for residents to provide input. There was a public comment period, but nobody was notified of that opportunity. There, one big flaw in the state system, the state program, is that there is no strict one-for-one needle exchange. So you can, you can get more syringes than you would, than you would return. So if the, if the, if the goal is to get these used needles off of the street, there should be a strict one-for-one exchange. If you recall the discussions, when you guys had discussions regarding opposition to the glassware being handed out, just remember that the state CDPH rules are less restrictive and likely allow for APC to hand out glassware and other items that, without the county or residence knowledge. My last thing would be, what are, what are going to be the differences between how the state program is being run, or, I'm sorry, how the program was being run before this letter, and how the program's going to be run after this letter from the state? So now that the state has taken it over, APC, what's the difference between how they were working and how they're going to be working now? Is there going to be, are they going to be handing out more supplies? Are they going to be, I know there's the deliveries to homeless camps and to residences, but is there other things that are, that the, are there other things that are causing APC to go to the state and not want to work with the county? I guess is what I'm trying to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Do we have any other hands up?
No more hands.
No more hands. Anyone else in the chambers? Last chance. Going to close public comment. Supervisor Spatier?
So I just want to add something about state law. It talks about a public comment period. And my personal opinion, not a lawyer, looking at Mr. Guintavano, public comment and then saying direct contact to law enforcement and public health officer, those aren't public folks. Those are public officials. And public comment should make the general public be aware of a comment period. And of course, the majority of the comments were positive. The only people who knew were probably the ones that were reached out to by any positive change, as they were the only one who knew of this outside of the four individuals specifically emailed by the state. I just think that's not appropriate for the state to decide specifically what communities they are allowed to do this in without asking for public comment from those communities. That is not meaningful consultation. And I just wanted to add that in there, that there's a reason why those comments were positive, because the rest of the public was not made aware and therefore could have gotten a different perspective.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I'll be, what should have, what should have been done and could have been done, whether the community might have benefited from a more aggressive public outreach, that's one discussion. Whether there's any allegation the state noticing process was defective, that's a different kind of discussion. And nothing I've seen indicates that there was any defect in the state noticing process. The concern raised by law enforcement have to do with the additional duty for consultation with local law enforcement. And, and they have a valid point. Doesn't look like that fully happened here. I don't know that that falls into substantial, like, I don't know what would have happened productive had that consultation occurred if we'd been dinking around on MOU for two years. And, and I don't know, again, if we were to have that consultation, would it be, would we be talking about things like one-on-one needle exchange, like the last caller talked about? Would we talk about needs-based exchanges where they could actually get more needles, not just a one-on-one, which is what CDPH seems to prefer? You know, so we're going to be talking about physical locations? Or we're going to talk about the medical aspects of how syringes are exchanged under this program? So again, I want to look forward. If we can build a consultation process that's going to be effective, come on down. And so my offer to refer this to Emergency Medical Care Committee, see if there's any interest on that group to plow into this with any kind of force or substance. But I don't have a good law enforcement presence on that committee right now either. So maybe that's not the best place to do it. But to the assertion that we would even consider requesting CDPH to suspend the permit while we spin up this non-existent process that we have, you know, I can't, that's cart before the horse. This license was approved by the state. It was duly noticed. If the consultation was inadequate and certain parties want to assert their rights on that, on that basis, that could be a discussion to have. This is not the time and place to have that discussion, I'm going to, I'm going to say. If the word demand letter comes up again, that's a different discussion for a different day and a different venue. But I don't see any value to going down that road. I do see a lot of value in building a process for the next syringe exchange programs that are going to come down the line. And I'm just wondering, the more I talk about this process, oh, let's be super inclusive. It's like, what am I asking for? More drama like we would get up in Lucerne? Or would I have the nice, kinder, gentler needle exchange that's going on in Lower Lake? Right? So it's, I totally get the concerns of people. But what I want to do is not second guess this license, not ask CDPH to suspend it while we spin up some process that we don't have. I am going to offer any assistance I can, whether it's through EMCC, whether it's through an ad hoc, whatever it's going to be. I do think we need to build capacity. I think we actually need additional sites. I think Lakeport is underserved in this regard. And I just got a very long letter talking about opioid abuse in the city of Lakeport and what's being done about it. So, you know, I'll offer myself up as a guinea pig to this new effort if we're going to be all collaborative and consultative with the idea that we could either spin up an RFP for new providers or at least create an internal process so that the next time this application comes up, we will be ready to rock and roll and provide not just the public input, but the consultation that the law does require. But we have to build capacity. We have to know that there are law enforcement partners and other partners that are actually interested in having this discussion. And I'm glad to see people here today, but that wasn't always the case in years past. So.
Okay. I think a more productive and effective way to go about this is to set up a meeting with CDPH, set up a meeting with Dr. Ramos, and, and have some face-to-face conversations and figure out, I don't know, we'll figure out. But to have, share our concerns, talk about how we've gotten here, what's going to work for us, not just with the supervisors, but with the stakeholders, with law enforcement, just sit down and have that conversation face-to-face. I don't think that sending a letter like this is, is the most effective way to get what we want. And I think what we want is some more local control here, but we also need to figure out how this went off the rails. Because we've heard a lot today, and I am concerned about the process and how we got here. This is an important issue. This is, you know, critical for public health in our county. So I'm not in favor of the letter. I am in favor of a delegation of stakeholders to, to have that conversation with CDPH. Did you have some?
No. I was going to ask Supervisor Green, did you mean consultation with the state or internally? Because you said if we're going to talk about consultation further and consult with each other, I don't know if you meant the state or internally.
Well, I guess it would depend on the application. So the, the consultation that's outlined in the statute applies to licensing issued directly by CDPH, as was in this case. If, if the county were to stand up again, and for example, I guess our current SEP is expired, at least by the terms of what CDPH signed us. But if we were to consider, if we were to stand up again, we want to have our own local control SEP and what would go into that. And then any future applicants would, would come through us if they felt comfortable with that process. They would still have some ability to go to the state directly if they weren't feeling the love from the county. But we could bake in, if we were to have a local authorization process, as we did for a syringe exchange program, we could bake in the consultation, not just with law enforcement, which is the bare bones of the state statute, but with BH, with some of our hospitals, you know, our fire districts that also have a stake in this, but, you know, aren't really required to be consulted with on this issue either. So I think to, you know, glass half full, if there is an ability to draft a local process or a local ordinance that would not just bake in this consultation, but also help us journey through this very difficult process. Because again, it's location, location, location. I think the speaker from Clear Lake said, well, we talked about a facility, but we couldn't get there as far as needle exchange goes. So if the county were, for example, considered standing up its own needle exchange program, we'd have some very interesting discussions about space use and liability and what have you. And we would still want to consult with our local partners on that. Conversely, if we had a local approval process and we did do an RFP for new providers or stuff like that, or we just had people coming out to our works volunteering to do this very hard work, which hasn't happened in the last 20 years. But if we created a process that would allow either the county on its own to consider driving an SEP or to create that collaborative and consultative process.
I just want to remind everyone for the sake of time, the agenda item is the letter, and item B is direct staff to best respond to the letter.
So the potential direction of staff would be to explore, basically picking up where we were, you know.
But it's, we're tied on the letter here, so we're not talking about new policy.
But the B, the B item does.
No, it's just about the letter.
But I think for me, any type of discussion with the current provider isn't going to happen. It hasn't. You know, and I can, if we're talking about the future, I mean, I wish I had the same mindset for lottery numbers, but I can guarantee they're not going to come talk to us. She doesn't have to, and she won't. So that's why I would rather speak with the California Department of Public Health to, you know, at least ensure that they come and talk with us and mitigate in some way. If you're going to go to the grandparents and get something, at least let the grandparents say, well, at least talk to your parents first, you know? That's what, that's what I feel like we're dealing with, you know? And so there's no effort to come and talk with us or even look at, well, you know, I do feel bad for the people that live on, so let's see what we can do. Let's rotate somewhere else or whatever. That's what we were talking about with the MOU. Once they knew about the MOU, and I know this, they, they just stopped talking. They knew they didn't have to. They kept saying, we're looking at it from a legal perspective. So that's why I feel it's important to request the state, talk with us and, or, you know, readdress this, you know? Whether they do it or not, just give us the opportunity to explain, you know? So if you're going to trump us, at least know, well, okay, it's too bad, you know? But I just don't feel like we've had that. So.
Chair Pisca's solution was a conference call of sorts. I certainly would support that and support any number of stakeholders we would want to throw on that. I do think having the ability to get people in the room, even if it's only a Zoom room, is probably going to be more effective than, than a letter and some back and forth about the facts. So here, they just need to hear the frustration. They do need to hear, again, because apparently their process needs some improvement on their side, too, as far as consultations, and that we need to communicate to them that we clearly understand that public input opportunity is not the same as consultation. And I think the meeting that Chair Pisca suggested is a, is a fit way to introduce that. And then if there's some additional dissatisfaction and dialogue that wants to happen after that initial discussion, fine, we can continue that in a different place. But I like the idea, I like the idea of the initial meet and greet and just air these concerns.
I'm okay with that at the bare minimum, you know, because I know that's probably what we'll end up getting.
As a starting point?
Yeah, I mean, I still, still support the letter, but I know that that may be where we go and that may be what we get. So, yeah.
Supervisor Spatier?
So part A is whether or not the letter is approved or not. And part B is any other direction to staff regarding the response to the letter. I think that saying, let's have a phone call with somebody who ignored our email responses when it's already approved is a complete waste of time. I mean, we're, we're asking them to do something that they should have already done, and they really just, they snubbed us. They did not care about the responses from law enforcement and our PHO. Our PHO let them know we were in the works of working on an MOU and still pulled the rug from underneath us in our own house. And we're going to say we're okay with that. That's, that's where I'm stuck, is we were working on something. There was definitely and always will be an avenue for them to go to the state. The state knows that we were working on something. It's not like we denied services in Lake County. We approved to continue saying, we need to update the MOU because the resolution we have currently is for syringe exchange. You want to add glassware? Let's talk about how that's going to fit into an agreement where we can all agree that this is how it's going to work. That was the original reason for the MOU. Not signing an MOU, going to the state, swiping the rug from underneath our feet and us saying okay, is a little weird to me. And to, to expect them to go into a conference call like we're going to change things when they snubbed our PHO and our law enforcement is also weird to me. It's not going to happen. Without a letter saying reconsider, let us sit back down, a phone call saying, hey, we'd like to talk and just to see what happens. No, that's, that's, they're not going to waste their time and it's going to waste our time. If we don't send a letter saying reconsider because your process was faulty, or if we don't go more strong-armed than that, then we're not, we're not going to see anything. And we are completely wasting our time.
It's pretty easy to put a letter in a file and forget about it and walk away. But I, having the conversation with board members is different than communicating with staff. We have a new PHO that's starting in 10 days. If we really want to get somewhere and we really want to be productive, a phone call is worth it. We haven't had a phone call with them. We haven't had that conversation. If you just send the letter, then what? What's your next step?
Then there's a follow-up to the letter.
Right. And I think you, you can save that letter for a next step. I don't think the letter's going to be effective. I don't think it's going to do anything. But if we really want to make some change, it's an investment of time and energy to have that phone call or set up that meeting or go down to Sacramento and sit in their office.
And I'm in agreement with that approach, with reaching out, obviously, making sure, as you said, our new public health officer, anyone who wants to be involved with this as we move forward, and ultimately attempting to make another contact with any positive change. We, we know why they went the state route. It's been written that we've been communicating with them, want to do it. Even Jonathan said, you know, it was close to being completed, but there was really no communication there. So cooperation and communication goes both ways. And, you know, what we've seen here at the board, comments, communication, has it always been, you know, open? You know, I don't know. I wouldn't perceive it that way if I was sitting on the other side of it. It's always, hey, we want to have control. We want to tell you what to do. They saw a path to the state. That's the reality of what we're dealing with right now. And I think communication from the county side to say, listen, we have some concerned members, some other things as we move forward, is really important right now. Because as Michael said, this path is open now at the state level, and there may be other folks that are coming into Lake County besides any positive change. And I think for the folks that are definitely want to get on this call, who provided this letter, you and EJ could have some real communications directly with CDPH as we're moving forward with this process in Lake County. So I'm in agreement with that direction to staff and to some board members to sit down and have those calls.
Any other comments?
I would agree with that direction of staff.
Supervisor Crandall?
Do I agree with, I like the letter idea, then talking to them.
Well, the writing is on the wall. So part A is not going to move forward, and it sounds like part B has consensus to direct staff. And I will work with Supervisor Crandall to make sure we continue the conversation rather than let it drop, if that's okay with the board.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us today on this item. And it looks like we have a lot more work to do in this area.
I, I do want to make one last comment, and it's probably not in my favor to make this comment happen. You do recognize that the two folks that... You do recognize that the two folks that deal with this issue the most are the ones advocating to write the letter, and the three who do not deal with it the most are not advocating to write the letter. I just, I just want to put that out there, that there are reasons for the program, but there are issues with the program, and we just lost any ability to try and make sure that we benefit in the way that our communities need this program to function.
Well, we do have a couple of weeks until our next meeting, and if we can't set something up, if you can't set something up, then bring this letter back to the next agenda. But we've got to try and have that conversation if we really want to work through things.
And I'll just make it very clear, each one of our communities deals with this issue. So your accusation of the three people are going against it doesn't affect us, absolutely affects each one of our communities. You know, where there's an active investigation happening in our community, don't know what happened there, but it's still happening, you know? So each one of our communities deals with this. We all have homeless, we all have opioid and drug use in each one of our communities. We have folks sleeping in our parks, we have folks sleeping under our bridges. All these types of things affect each one of our communities. So yeah, make your comments all you want, but I want to make sure we have the most effective communication with CDPH as they're rolling this out. I don't think they had this program back in 2002 or '06 when this program first started out and the county said, hey, we need this here. So I think there are conversations that need to happen as we move forward. And we want to have an open, honest communication with individuals who might want to help this community here in Lake County.
And I, and I can appreciate that Supervisor Simon. I think too, it is in all of our communities, and I really would like to see the provider go to your community and deal with it and go to all of our communities and deal with it. However, they come to the most, you know, they come to Lucerne, they come to Lower Lake. I know that's, they only want to go where they want to go. And I feel they should be going everywhere around the lake. We have a big lake, we have different areas, and they don't do that. And that's what the MOU and the discussion was going to be about is, hey, look, we want to see this, and this, this way, we want to see you rotate, we want to see you mark your, your needles so we know and we can take better data or something like that. But that, that's never met, you know? And so I, but my biggest thing is, it is in our communities, it should be everywhere, not just in Lucerne and Lower Lake. You know what I mean? That's just how I feel.
Supervisor Green?
I'll let it go.
I do have a follow-up question. If you, do you disagree with this direction Supervisor Swatier? To have these conversations, are you going to be the best person to meet with CDPH?
Am I going to be rude and despicable to CDPH? No, that's not how I
I'm, I'm just asking because of how the conversation's going and, you know, I, I know that you, you know, you can handle this, and I just want to check in with you and that you're up to it. Yep.
I, I do not understand the question, as you have seen me in many different situations, and I handle
Well, you're against this direction, so I'm just
Because I have the right to be against the direction. I think it's not the appropriate action taken based on what the state has submitted to us. Just because I disagree with the direction doesn't mean I'm going to sabotage or do anything ridiculous. I don't know what you're asking. We're, we're allowed to disagree here
Yes, right.
And move forward.
I'm giving you the option of whether or not you want to have the conversation.
I, I think, I think you're, you're questioning my movement, moving forward. And, and I don't think that has anything to do with this, that, that's, that's a little personal, and I take offense to that.
No, I'm, I'm, it's not personal. I, I just want to make sure that, you know, you said that, that the three of us are the ones who are in favor of having this direct conversation. You don't, you disagree, and so I just want to make sure that this is something that you're okay with. And I know that you can do it, but because of the conversation we're having with the public, I just want to give you the option. And it sounds like you're up for it, and I know that you can do it.
And that's, that's that.
Okay. I want to ask you. Supervisor Crandall, you good? Okay. All right. Well, now we'll close this, and I, I think we could probably use a recess, so we'll come back at 10:50. Okay, we are back, and we'll move on to, well, we'll do our 4.1 item since we've got Director Turner here.
Come on up.
Recording in progress.
Good morning, Director Turner. I'm sure hoping that 4.1 was the extra item. Excellent.
Different item.
I want to thank the board for taking this item up as an extra. We have been working on it for a while. Additionally, I want to thank the board for approving an increase in the ARPA funds that are getting allotted to our general plan and local area plan updates, which we're getting ready to launch. So we are now fully funded for that. The grant application that you'll see before you, and I'll just give an overview, I have our deputy administrator ready to answer any detailed questions. But this grant will go to support our housing element update. When I started here back about a year ago, we were under the impression that we had to have a housing element update by August 23rd of this year. However, subsequent state legislation enabled us to move to just the second, seventh cycle of housing element update, which will be due in 2027. That was not included in, so far in a draft agreement that will be coming to your board for the contractor that's going to help us with the general and local area plan update. So this grant goes to cover that. According also to state law, we are required to do a safety element update after every approval of our housing element update. So although safety element update is one of our first activities in this upcoming series of updates because it's been so long needed, and the climate data that we'll be gathering will go to actually inform a number of other long-term planning projects, both with us and over in Office of Emergency Services. So we are also anticipating, however, that after we adopt the housing element in 2027, we're still going to need funding for another safety element update at that time. I would love to introduce our deputy community development administrator. I don't think I've introduced her to you yet. Shannon Walker Smith has joined our team about, what, like six weeks ago already?
I think I've headed towards eight weeks.
It's going very quickly. When I first moved to Lake County and I was just getting back into the labor market after being home with my kids for a few years, I was a data manager for Healthy Start. And so I attended the children's council meetings and was taking minutes for that, and that's when I first met Shannon. So I have followed her career for the last 23 years. I've always thought of her as a total rock star, the way she deals with people, the way she is a positive and supportive manager, and just her leadership style and her acumen. I am very, very thankful that we had the opportunity to add her to our team. And so I will turn it over to Shannon in case there's any details on the grant that I left out. I can think of a couple already, and if the board has any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Good morning. Thanks for having me. Do you guys want me to say more about this grant application, or would you like to ask any questions?
Looks like we have a question.
I guess I should turn on my microphone. I appreciate what's in front of us. In my mind, I want to say yes, but I also feel I need more time. There's 16 pages of materials that I was not aware of until I just reloaded my agenda, and I feel my decision should be based on what I've read and not what I've heard. I would like for this to come back after our lunch hour, just so at least we are given the time to look this over, or else we're saying yes because it feels right to say yes. I want to say yes, I want to move forward on this, but maybe there's some details that I might have questions, but I don't have questions because I haven't had the chance to read this.
Sure.
So that's, that's my only issue that I have currently, is I, I believe I know what I'm saying yes to, but I, I want to make sure I know what I'm saying yes to.
We're here all day.
Okay.
We'd be happy to answer questions after the break.
Sure. So consensus for the board to come back after lunch? Look at this.
Or a long enough break for me to read through the 16 pages.
Sure, if I can throw a question, so we can come back and maybe
Sure.
if they need to do research on that.
So I appreciate this coming back so we can digest it, but on my first scan through, it looked great, and I know you tackle the elements as you can, these are big lifts. But in, in terms of doing the climate resiliency focus on this, safety and housing, sure, like housing, I, I get very firmly where the state's head is on that, and some deadlines may apply. But if I'm taking a global look at climate resiliency, I'm taking a look at the land use element, I'm taking a look at water resources and agricultural resources. So I don't want to like dogpile three elements on top of the two that are going to be a big chunk by themselves, but I also don't want to do this climate resiliency work in isolation without at least having some inkling about, you know, if and when we'll be able to tackle these other elements and whether it has to be piecemeal or whether we can do it more synergistically. And you don't need to answer that right now. If you want to think about it, you can certainly bring it back, or you can answer it now.
We can't answer that right now. So we're getting ready to launch a full general plan update that will include all of the elements. The housing element wasn't included, so that's why we're seeking funding specifically for that element and the safety element that will come after that. But the ARPA funds plus a couple of other grant projects that we have, LEAP and REAP, are going to fund the rest of the general plan update, and we're going to get started on that. We're going to kick off this fall. Yeah.
Additionally, by law, we're required to have a climate resiliency plan as part of the safety element, as well as a county-wide evacuation plan. And so the great thing about doing the safety element early, which is not included in this grant, it's already included in the ARPA, is that that information will be part of the early safety element update, and not only that, but it will also go to inform a number of the items such as the climate adaptability plan and other things that are located as community development responsibilities housed within the local hazard mitigation plan. So it's, it's really exciting that we're actually starting with it and ending with it, because the data that we have, I think, is really going to resonate as we move forward to do the local area plans, since the climate information that we're going to gather through that initial process will help to inform why we have such new, different communities now than we did a long time ago when we first did the local area plans and where we're going from there.
Hey. Supervisor Crandall?
And talking about the area plans, local area plans, I know the MACs in my district are really happy about that. They, they want to give some heavy input to that, so that's, glad to hear it. And I, and I'm fine with if we need to read, let's read through it and whatnot, but I thank you for applying for this, it was a very good job.
Thank you.
Okay. Any public comment on moving this till after lunch? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, then we'll close this and come back when we figure out when we're having lunch. Thank you. Okay, 7.2, A, consideration of delegation to NACO, and B, consideration of delegation to North Coast Opportunities. This is from our admin office. And, did you have anything or just, I can speak to it?
I don't have anything specific to it, if you, if you don't mind speaking.
Okay. So I know that this was prepared after our NACO delegation to Texas, and so this officially makes Supervisor Swatier and myself the delegates. Is, that's A. And B, have been approved to the NCO board, that happened in July, so this is being brought back to confirm that delegation. Do you have questions or comments from the board? Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just a question on the B item, and it's more academic than anything. So I know the way their board is set up, there is a spot set up for the government representative, and that's why the previous applicant isn't doing it. But the county does business with NCO from time to time on contract, so I, I don't have any firsthand knowledge of what their bylaws are like or whether there's any conflict of interest provisions that come with having a government employee on there. So I think this is a longstanding practice, and I'm not saying it's improper in any way, but just having plowed through some conflict of interest issues with a different agency, I'm just wondering if we have taken a look at their bylaws or their, or their board operations to clarify that government representatives on there are subject to conflict of interest requirements when voting on potential county business.
Yes, I did review and sign their bylaws.
And it has a conflict of interest provision?
Yes.
Thank you.
Supervisor Swatier?
Just to, I don't know if it was mentioned before, but there used to be this committee assignment on our, for the county, just as recent as prior to 2019, because Jim Steele, I believe, was the appointed committee assignment for NCO. So I think it's simply, depending on what's on the agenda, working with county council and making sure that, I mean, we do that regularly anyways if we're involved with certain things. Sorry, I, I think that, for me, I'm good with moving forward. Everything on our agenda requires us to kind of review it from a perspective of, is there any conflict already?
Okay. Any public
If I can add something. So I appreciate Chair Pyska stepping up to be in that position, and also really appreciated the time that we spent with NACO, and I'm looking forward to greater time being spent with NACO. I, I wanted to at least allude to, I guess it's not connected, but it is connected, that there is definitely benefits of being involved at a more federal-level organized group such as NACO. I do feel that having supervisors only involved may not be to our greatest of advantages. I know we found that there were county administrator sessions that were over at the conference, there was some county council sessions, and so I, I don't know if at one point you'll be seeing some things returning saying that this is the delegation that's going to these conferences, but I just think it would benefit us to look a little further than just supervisors to make sure that everyone is learning and being well-positioned for the issues that we need to resolve here in Lake County.
Okay. Okay, any public comment? Any in the Zoom room? Okay, then we'll bring it back to the board for action.
There's nothing further, Madam Chair. I move to approve Supervisor Sabatier as delegate and Chair Pyska as the alternate to the NACO board.
Second.
It's not technically the NACO board, just to serve as delegates to NACO. So there are boards with the NACO, but we're not assigned to them.
As, well, delegate to what then?
Because once a year at the conference, there is voting capability, but we're not Board of Directors.
Maybe just consideration of deleg-
Yeah.
Delegation to NACO?
Yeah, just
Like the, the NACO membership? Okay. I'll modify the motion. Motion to approve Supervisor Sabatier as delegate and Supervisor Pyska as alternate delegate to NACO.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
And also move to approve Supervisor Pyska as delegate to NS, to North Coast Opportunities Board of Directors as the Lake County representative.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. And item 7.3, consideration of appointment to the Buckingham Park Water District Board. We have a resignation and a position that needs to be filled. And the applicant is John Mar. This is in my district, but I am fine with this if someone else wants to take it. Any comments on this?
No.
Okay. Any public Any public input?
No hands in Zoom.
Okay, then we'll bring it back to the board.
There's nothing further, Madam Chair. I move to appoint John Maurer as a qualified applicant to the Buckingham Park Water District Board of Directors.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And 7.4, A, consideration of approval to revision, approval to revision to A, Personal Rule 1503 Sick Leave, and B, consideration of approval to revision to Personal Rule 1504 Bereavement Leave, and C, consideration of approval to revision to 14 Family and Medical Leave and California Family Rights Act, and D, consideration of approval to New Pregnancy Disability Leave Policy. And this is brought to us from Human Resources. Okay, so she should be? She in Zoom room or coming in?
Hopefully she'll. You don't see her unmuting.
She's running. Do we hear footsteps? Okay. There she is. Okay, come on up. No problem.
Good morning. Pam Samick, Director of Human Resources, and Diana Rico, Deputy Director of Human Resources. And today, actually Diana is, today Diana is going to present this item.
Yeah. Good morning. Diana Rico, Deputy HR Director. And I am here today to present to you some policies that were updated by HR staff to conform to changes to California law. The policies include our sick leave policy, which is Personnel Rule 1503. It was last updated July of 2015. Our bereavement leave Personnel Rule 1504, which I don't have a date on when it was last updated. Our Family and Medical Leave and California Family Rights Act policy, which was adopted by the Board of Supervisors in 1994. And I don't have a date of if it's been updated since that date. And our new policy, Pregnancy Disability Leave. So the major changes in these policies include, for our sick leave policy, sick leave usage for family members has been extended to include a designated person. And California law for sick leave defines this as a person identified by the employee at the time the employee is requesting paid sick leave. Employees may designate one designated person per a rolling 12-month period. Another change to our sick leave policy is how sick leave is accrued by our extra help staff. We currently, extra help employees do receive legally mandated sick leave, but it wasn't included in our policy. So now we've included that and it, leave accrues for one hour for every 30 hours worked for our extra help staff. It is capped at 48 hours and it is not subject to any cash out or payout upon termination. Should I keep going and then questions at the end? Okay. For, and those are the major changes for our sick leave. For bereavement leave, under California Family Rights Act, employees, county employees, including extra help, are eligible for five days of unpaid bereavement leave for the death of any covered family member under California Family Rights Act. Our county policy, which covers paid bereavement leave, will remain the same. So employees, permanent employees, does not include extra help staff, will continue to receive 24 hours of paid bereavement leave for the death of a covered family member and 40 hours for bereavement leave that requires over 500 miles of travel. We also removed the language that bereavement leave must be used within seven days of initial use. Under California Family Rights Act, bereavement leave can be used intermittently or on a continuous basis, but must be used within three months of the family member's death. Now I'm running out of breath. For Family Medical Leave and California Family Rights Act, the major change is family members include parent-in-laws and a designated person. So the definition for designated person under Family Medical Leave is different from the definition under sick leave. The definition for Family Medical Leave is any individual related by blood or whose association with the employee is equivalent to a family relationship. And employees, again, can designate one designated person per a rolling 12-month period. For child bonding requests, we have eliminated the limitation on parents working for the same employer. So previous to this change, if both parents worked for the county, they would have to share the 12 weeks of child bonding time. Now with this update to the law, both parents get 12 weeks each. And our new policy, Pregnancy Disability Leave, it is available to employees who are disabled by conditions of pregnancy, childbirth, and recovery. We created this standalone policy because employees who do not qualify for FMLA may still qualify for Pregnancy Disability Leave. So we thought it would be best to have its standalone policy. All employees are always encouraged to contact HR for any questions on sick leave and leave of absences. But we hope that these changes are employee-friendly and can be easily understood by county staff. That concludes my recap, but Pam, anything I add?
You didn't miss anything except these policies were sent to the union ahead of time. Because these are legal policies with state and federal laws, we sent it in conjunction with sending the policy to the board for review.
The bereavement, sorry, the bereavement leave was sent, the others, we're working on side letters for the different bargaining units because bereavement leave is included in our MOUs. So we have to make changes to that, so that was sent to the union. But the other ones, we haven't, but we will, yes, shortly after that, after it's approved.
Questions?
So the process is it gets approved by the board and then the MOUs, I mean, the labor unions?
Yes.
Not the other way around?
Yes. Now technically, this is not subject to a meet and confer because it's a legal change. But we send a meet and confer courtesy notice so that they can review the policies. In the case of bereavement leave, they had some changes or some questions because they were confused. We updated the policy, sent it back to them, and then submitted to the board. So yes, typically, if we make a policy change or if we add a benefit, it goes to the board for approval first, then to the union. Because the board could say no or could make changes. So our policy has always been that we send it to the board first, then to the unions.
And then if there's an issue at the unions?
Then we would bring it back.
Come back to the board?
Yes, so if the unions had a question, I mean, if it was a minor question, we would update it per that minor question. But if it was major, we would come back to the board with their concerns. But generally speaking, when it's a law change, they understand that it's California or federal law. We're required to change it. In this case, they didn't object to the changes. They just had questions with our wording.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
Well, that opens me up to a bit of a different conversation. I was under the impression that everything had been submitted to the unions. And I had heard that there had been changes, so the bereavement was changed. But if we haven't sent to them the other parts where there may be changes, I just feel we're negotiating in public. I know that it's a federal law or a state law, but even the language, to me, is part of the negotiations as to how it's written in, and if they've already requested changes to the bereavement leave. I just, I feel like anytime we do this out in open, we are showing our full hand of what it is that we're willing to offer, willing to change. Here, we're only matching what the state or federal law changes were. But I'm uncomfortable doing this in public when it hasn't been shared with them first to get their feedback. I just, I feel it's, I feel it's a step missed before coming here. We've had closed sessions sometimes before talking about some of these changes, not these specific ones, but changes to their contract. Whether it is a negotiated thing or not, it still changes their contract. I, I don't know. I feel uncomfortable if we are just telling the unions, this is what we're giving you, sign here. Obviously, there's a greater conversation happening. Bereavement was changed. And I think we should give them that opportunity to review these things before we ever come into open session to give our vote, or else, again, I feel we are negotiating in public.
This, well.
Lloyd?
Yes, so the board memo does make reference to the, these changes being required by law so that these changes are made to conform with California law. The, for your board's consideration, the meet and confer provision under the Government Code, under the MMBA, does define the process of meet and confer as a mutual obligation between the two sides to endeavor to reach agreement on matters within the scope of representation. And that term is specifically defined in Government Code Section 3504. And there is a carve-out under that code section for what constitutes matters within the quote-unquote "scope of representation." And the carve-out is for that term not to include consideration of the merits, necessity, or organization of any service or activity provided by law or executive order. So for, under the board memo, it recognizes the, that carve-out exception for, under that term, since these changes are required by law. And staff from Human Resources also gave indication in that memo that essentially as a courtesy, these changes may pursuant to requirements under law of being sent to the unions as a courtesy notice.
So the changes in language was simply a clarity issue, and so we clarified it to make it easier to understand. They brought up a point. We agreed with them, and it was not changing the overall policy as dictated by law. So we made the change in language to make it easier to understand. And that's really what the conversation was about.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, if these changes are just in the four corners of changes required by law, then as it states, meet and confer is not required. That's not to say that they wouldn't want to give input, but we're not in that negotiation time right now. But in the interest of simplifying things, I'm actually looking at how these various changes are labeled. I see two personnel rules, 1503, 1504. I see something with a 14 title, which indicates it's probably a longer policy document, and then I see a new policy. So I have rules. I have a summary information of leave rights, and then I have a policy. So, and I'm assuming these live somewhere on the Intranet and the joy that is our Intranet. But I have found, prior to my time on the board, that as an employee, I found just the Intranet and finding the various leaves and policies and personnel rules to be a bit of a chunky monkey. So I'm wondering if in the spirit of not just simplifying the language within these rules and policies and advisories that we could, it's outside the scope of this item. But, you know, I'd love to see something like a more universal, user-friendly summary, not just all these more clarified and hopefully more readable rules. But there's a chunk of rules in there, so even if they are individually readable, being able to access this, have it readily available to employees.
Let's keep it to the item. Thanks.
Anyway, I see some room for improvement there. If we're going to simplify these rules and policies and stuff like that, I'm taking a look at the titles and seeing some room for improvement. Not suggesting we make any changes here today, but I just see room for improvement there.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Supervisor Sabatier?
And I'll just say, I disagree. If there's a need to clarify language to help better understand, and it hasn't been sent to them, and we're talking about finalizing, I would rather that we have that conversation, make sure it's clear and clarified, then bring it to us. And if we're going to move forward today, I will be voting no because I don't believe that's the right process to respect the role that our unions play.
Well, not every policy is actually in the MOU. So the MOU governs the working conditions and agreements with each unit. And our personnel rules are rules that dictate leave, vacation, and a lot more. So they're kind of two different things. The MOU is the first governing document. If it's not in the MOU, then the personnel rules take precedent. This is the way we have always done it. Also, to me, it doesn't make sense to bring something to the union unless the board has approved it because there's been concepts and ideas like adding an extra holiday where you wanted information, but I didn't know if you were going to approve it. Had we sent it to the union ahead of time and you said no, it would create confusion to send them a policy that you haven't reviewed and approved or a benefit that you haven't reviewed and approved. So I think the process, in my estimation, is good. We do have a good working relationship with all the unions. They know that they can speak to us at any time, and they do. So I don't think this disrespects them the way it's currently being done.
Okay, thank you. I'll open it up for public comment. Do we have anyone in the chambers or the Zoom room? No hands up?
No hands.
I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Can it be a group motion? Are we doing one-offs?
The suggestion, your board may take it separately.
Nothing further. I move to approve the revision to Personnel Rule 1503 Sick Leave.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Move to approve the revision to Personnel Rule 1504 Bereavement Leave.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Move to approve revision to some document, 14 Family and Medical Leave and California Family Rights Act.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve, I mean, just, I guess.
Nay.
Nay.
Move to approve the new Pregnancy Disability Leave Policy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Aside from 4.1 in calendars, we will go back to our consent items. And we've got 5.1, Approved Concession Agreement for Coffee Kiosk Services by and between the County of Lake and Mix Lakeport LLC in the amount of $200 per month, and authorize the chair to sign. This is from our admin office. But pulled by Supervisor Sabatier.
Thank you for that. I have two things that I want to bring up on here. One is the $200 per month. When you review the agreement for everything that the county is going to handle for the coffee kiosk, and I'll just read it through. We're going to take care of heat, lights and electrical current, cold water connection, wastewater connection, and water removal. I don't have any data in front of me to show us what this actually costs us, and I just want to make sure that we're not losing any money. And this is a private business, and I don't think that the county should be involved in providing a very kind service of having a coffee kiosk in our. a very kind service of having a coffee kiosk in our courthouse, but that we should use taxes to lose on the services that we are saying that we're going to take care of. And so without the data in front of me, I know that it was seven years ago or eight years ago that the $200 was done, and we know that there's been quite a lot of changes since then. And I just want some sort of proof to show us that this is not a deficit for us, no matter how great the service might be. That is not for us to, to decrease the cost of actually doing business and using taxpayer dollars for that. Second is that I did find that this is in connection with Herbalife. Herbalife is about connecting other folks that will sell Herbalife for you. And I do not see anything on here that says that there will be no solicitation to expand their product line or something like that. I don't see anything like that. I doubt that that will happen. But at the same time, the fact that I don't see it there, just something I thought that I would bring up. And those are, those are my two things.
Okay, thank you. In regards, Stephen Carter, Assistant County Ministry of Officer, in regards to the $200, that amount was set at least eight years ago. Now, I will, I understand the need for data. When you're looking at that front kiosk, the heating, et cetera, you can't quantify that, because we're going to have to heat that area anyways or cool it. Now, we could quantify water and electricity. There is a meter for electricity, but there is not a water meter. So it's part of our main building's water meter, and it would just be a random estimate, not, and so we could potentially put in a water meter, but that becomes far more expensive. Electricity-wise, we don't have any history, because during the pandemic, it was very sporadic, and we would need this contract to go forward for a little while so that we can gather that data, or from data prior to the pandemic. And this vendor would be in the courthouse for about 30 hours a week. And I do want to bring up an example of the ROV building, which we just rented recently. And it's $1.11 per square feet, square feet, per square foot. And being generous, saying that it's about 150 square feet out there for the kiosk, that would be about $166.50 a month, leaving about $34 towards utilities of electricity and the shared water and shared airspace with heating and cooling. So it seems like it's decently in line. Can we move further and have public services look a little further in? Yes, we can. I do believe that would take staff time, but it is doable. But we would have to have someone in place or a vendor in place to have that data.
So a lot of times, commercial leases are calculated, the, the services by square foot. And we, I don't know if we do that with our, any of our departments, because they're all county departments. So we would have to go through the effort of determining all operating costs by the square foot for this tiny little spot. But maybe we do need to look at that $200 amount. If it hasn't been adjusted in eight years?
It hasn't. But if you like, take the example of ROV, it's right in line.
Okay.
And we can take a look at that for, let's say, the next contract, or we can take a look at, look at it and bring this one back with a potential different number.
Okay.
From the research I've done recently, I don't know that it would move much, if any, from my initial research.
Well, if you've taken a look at it, I mean, I don't know. It's-
Because like putting in a water meter, all of a sudden you have now connection and extra fees that wouldn't have been there prior.
Yeah.
And we can break it down per FTE, but they aren't an FTE, so that would be like either per square foot in the building or FTEs of, and they're not here full-time, they're 30 hours. So there's a lot of factors that we can look into to give you an estimate. But on my rough estimate off of others, similar, it's unlikely to move up more than maybe $10, if anything.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public?
Oh, there is one more.
What?
I didn't address Herbalife.
Oh, right, go ahead.
So the contract does not specifically say that the vendor can't solicit. Is there some kind of language that can be added, or does it need to? And I'm asking that towards Lloyd.
We can work with staff to, if the board chooses to incorporate such language, our office can work with staff in trying to come up with a language as a provisions, part of the provision in the contract.
As like an amendment, preferably, but.
I would be in agreement with that language change or addition to the contract.
And here is the vendor.
Hi.
Just, just to summarize, so you know-
Say your name.
Josh Fortell, owner of Mix Lakeport.
Great.
Would you mind if I summarize the concerns that were brought up so that you can speak to those, rather than just speak about the general coffee kiosk?
Yeah.
So my concern was the $200 a month. It's been about eight years since we've increased it. So it was talking about where did we get the $200 from. And then my other concern was that you are connected with Herbalife, which is not a issue. But I know that part of Herbalife is also expanding and getting new clientele and, and selling to those. And just want to make sure that within, or I proposed that in the contract that there's a amendment added in to prohibit solicitation for Herbalife type of thing.
Yeah, for sure. That's definitely not my deal. Yeah, so, perfect.
Okay.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to the public. I think I did. I don't think we have anyone in here to speak. Anyone in Zoom?
No comments on Zoom.
Okay, then we'll bring it back to the board.
So I, I'm going to offer, Mr. Guintivano, I'm looking for the least complicated way forward. We have a business who's looking open to open. There are many people here who are looking for drinks that we all have to walk down the street for, obviously not the most important of things at this moment. But if we move forward and request that an amendment be brought to us in that language, is that appropriate? Or take a break and come back with that potential language? Which one is the most appropriate and easiest way to move forward?
We can take a break to see what language we can come up with. And would that include both the price amount, just that language for the solicitation reference?
We can work with staff with that, and we'll have something come up after the break.
After lunch?
Yes.
Okay. Stretching this day out. Yeah, okay.
Hot beverages and health beverages.
We're going to continue this until after lunch.
Yeah, and also, yeah, just to clarify, Herbalife is just a brand of smoothies that I use. So we'll have, and then the coffee will be San Francisco Bay Coffee. So that's just, just the brand I'm going to be using to make the smoothies.
Great, thank you. Okay. Next is 5.2. Close to my agenda.
So Madam Chair, obviously, in this memo, as presented by all three, myself, Jessica Piska, and Terry Loggson, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Terry at this point. She can do a small presentation, then we can move forward. Our Climate Resiliency Officer, Terry Loggston.
Thank you. Terry Loggston, Chief Climate Resiliency Officer and Tribal Liaison for the County of Lake. This is just coming back to your board. You approved in the submission of this grant in March 28, March 28 of this year. The state did not have the partnership agreement available at that time. And so before we can sign the grant agreement, we need to have the partnership agreement with the RRA and the Lake County Resource Conservation District approved. And I thought, instead of coming back a third time, we'd go ahead and put the contracts in there. So that is what's before you today. And just as a reminder, the, the grant application, which Ms. Walker Smith and Ms. Turner referenced earlier through the CDD Department, this grant will fund the countywide evacuation plan, as well as the climate adaptation plan. And for myself, for my office, and for my work, it will pay for administrative support, so that way the county general fund isn't being utilized. It's going to build the capacity of the Lake County Fire Safe Council, which is also one of the things under my job position, as well as development of low or no-cost resources to reduce the risks of fire from hazardous vegetation, earthquakes, and environmental causes. Also, under my job, is development of educational and training tools to assist RRA members, the public, and non-member governmental agencies. So that's something else that I'm going to do that's now funded for the RRA and the Fire Safe Council to do, and development of community program to improve the resilience of our local forested areas.
Thank you. Supervisor Spatia?
So one of the reasons I pulled this was to ask questions. There's two supervisors on the RRA, so it makes it difficult to have those conversations until open up in the public. I know that the RRA came to us for some money to provide to kind of a pay-to-play type of situation, which all JPAs typically have. Did that work out for every group that's part of the RRA? I know we did our part from both the watershed protection district and the county in providing, I think it was $5,000 each or something like that. So was wondering where that was with the RRA. And the reason I ask is, there's, there's, I understand the connections, but I also am uncertain as to what is our overall role, what is our overall capacity, and what is our overall liability in being the lead of this grant versus the RRA? Because a lot of the conversations that kind of stem from the RRA eventually come over and connect themselves to the county. And I know that, in my mind, and again, maybe I'm just completely off because I'm not part of the group, but the JPA to me is typically separate, and the money would come from the JPA into the county, not from the county into the JPA, such as what we're being offered today. So I'm just kind of curious as to, is this a step towards getting into that with the capacity expansion that's being discussed within this grant? Just, just very curious as to how much this is asking from our admin office, because we, we have limited capacity within the admin office, but also understand the connection between the Climate Resiliency Officer and what the RRA is doing. But it's hard for me to navigate and understand exactly what's going on.
Do you want to speak on this, Director Loggston? It has to do with the grant that you're already working under.
Well, it's, that's a good, you know, very good questions. One of the thing that this does is build the capacity of the RRA. You had a question regarding the membership fees. We're in the process of getting that update, Mr. Carter, and we'll give the update to the RRA of who has paid. As you know, it's by voting member blocks, so there are some blocks that share, because all of the public water systems have one vote. Then their amount, and it's the same with the tribal nations, their amount is less than $5,000. It's a share of that. And so we're, you know, with the transition within the administrative office of fiscal staff getting that update, which we will, the RRA will receive next month. As I said, you know, a lot of the work that is in the grant are things that I am charged with doing, but don't have a budget for. So although my time is covered under the grant, the county committed to providing administrative assistance support, as well as travel, and the public information, the, the creation of collateral and information. And so since that was not funded, we put it in the grant. And so, and since I already work a lot with the Lake County Resource Conservation District, and we're trying to build the RRA capacity, you know, it's, it's like, what's the permaculture term, stacking functions, so that all of us will work on it funded.
Okay. There's, there's just a lot of interweaving, and, and I get confused as to, if it's a process to create a more independent, capable RRA where the capacity is available, or if it's truly a, this is how it has to function, no matter if the RRA was more expansive and better positioned to kind of take it on, on their own. And, and again, I, I'm going to, I'm going to vote for this. I just need a little bit of clarity and understanding. Now, the RCD got themselves involved, because I believe they're, they were selected by the RRA to be the lead agency, or to provide assistance as lead agency. And I just needed to get a little bit of a better understanding.
Sure. So the RCD is providing the administrative support to the RRA now, not the administration office. You know, I still liaison a little bit, but it's covered under this work. And the reason that the county is the lead agency, one, is to cover time, staff time, to be involved in this grant and in this work, because there is, I don't, overhead administrative costs. So that's covered in the grant. So there will be, you know, as before, where you're brought before your board was to provide, allocate funds to provide support to the RRA. This is the first step of building their capacity so that they can do that on their own.
Good.
Right. But also, the climate adaptation plan and emergency evacuation plan are elements that the county is responsible for. And so that would not be under the jurisdiction of the Risk Reduction Authority.
Correct. Correct. And some of the HMP items.
Yep.
You know, so.
And I think your question, I thought you did a good job of answering. These are just the steps that we need to build the capacity for the RRA to be standalone. We're getting there. I think if you've noticed, as we've come throughout the years, we've been building that capacity. I think we're kind of along the same path that we had with the Workforce Alliance in North Bay. It started up, and now it's a standalone, you know, JPA that we have, that we're there. It has its own executive director. It's moving forward. It has its own line of funding. And I think as we're moving forward with it, that's where we're going to get to. We're just not there yet. Hopefully, in a couple of years, that's where we are as a standalone agency. I know that invoices did go out to our partners. I know some partners have started to bring in the funds as we're moving forward. And down the road, there's many different conversations, how we continue with this JPA here in Lake County to keep it growing. So that is the ultimate goal, and we'll keep reporting back as we're taking the steps. This is just one more step, and that's a successful opportunity for the capacity building that's needed. And we are catching traction. I mean, this is a great grant that we're doing now, that we're going to move forward with. And over the next few years, there should be some more that we'll be rolling in, so.
I appreciate the conversation needed to, as you know, I've been asking these questions for a while, and just need to better gauge as to where we are. I think it was game-changing for you guys for the, hate to use this word, pay-to-play, but to get every voting block to submit money, because if you believe in the work that's happening, which I think is important work that needs to happen, then you can't make it happen with nothing.
Yep.
So again, thank you for the explanations, and ready to move forward.
Yeah. And just another reminder, the Lake County Fire Safe Council is still under the county, too. And so to build that capacity, the funding does have to come through the county, as it does flow through the RCD.
Correct. And I'm, I'm sure I'll be before your board again in another month or two with a grant request, a grant application request. And I'm hoping to include, you know, an executive director position for the RRA, and possibly the RCD, to get more funding to build the capacity. You know, I have found, grant writing is, is great. I can, I can, I'm very good at assessing, this is a match, this is a match, this is how I can make it. Here's our partners to pull in, to do the other things that the county can't do. But it's, it's a lot to manage grants. And so I'm glad, very thankful for your support on the grants for, you know, that I'm working in the community. I've got leads. I'm working with the, you know, the Lake County Fire Chiefs Association, looking for funding for their specific needs, and for hazardous mitigation mitigation actions. So I will be probably once every two months before your board with another grant application, I hope.
Which is required.
Which is part of, which is required as my grant. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Any comments? Any, Supervisor Green?
Thank you. I apologize. I haven't pulled the new kid on the block line recently, but this one I will again, because RRA kind of precedes me. So I like the idea of growing capacity. I haven't seen the original JPA agreement. I'm not aware if there was some MOU that- I haven't seen the original JPA agreement, I'm not aware if there was some MOU that was associated with the formation of the JPA that clarified, clarifies the distinct roles and responsibilities. But I see here a contract basically between the county and the RRA. So it's an independent contract that in actual life, RRA is for all intents and purposes the county, until we grow that capacity to be truly freestanding.
No. No.
It's an independent.
It's a JPA.
So, to finish my question, so I assume the RRA board has met and reviewed this, and given its approval, including our two county reps on the RRA?
Mm-hmm. Yesterday.
So as members of the JPA, the county gets to take a look at this proposed agreement from the lens of the RRA itself, along with all the other partners on that board. But then we bring it back to this board to approve this contract with this freestanding entity that just happens to have two supervisors on it. So, under the terms of the JPA agreement, which I haven't been educated on, I assume there's some conflict of interest provisions dealing with how contracts are reviewed and approved at that level.
That I do not know. I'm not an expert lawyer.
If I can add a comment in between Supervisor Green? I know that Supervisor Simon and myself have brought stuff from the APC and LTA, which is also a JPA. And decisions made within those boundaries of the JPA are isolated to that JPA, and then can be brought here for another vote of support. We did that with the property exchange, in order to provide the property for the bus depot. There is no conflict of interest at that point, since it is a decision made by an entire board, not by one individual or unique individuals. And I think that we are isolated by being part of a JPA, and not just bringing it as a private person, trying to get something that we can benefit from. I think I.
Well, I'm going to look at.
The question being asked that our council needs to answer.
And generally, there are conflict of interest provisions built in, addressed in the government code, that each entity would go through as part of its analysis of whether or not a member within that entity should recuse himself or herself. JPAs typically do have conflict of interest provisions built in the JPA agreement itself. But as a caveat, I have not, I have not seen the actual JPA. Or perhaps I had, but I have no recollection of it. There's a lot of documents that have been flying off, both under the, for the RRA or the LCRCD. Got that correct?
Well, I don't want to hang this up, and there's probably votes to do it, but since we're kicking two items after lunch anyway, my general concern, and no objection to the scope of work here, just, you know, we're signing off on a contract that just got approved by RRA, which is basically, again, independent, but not fully acting independently. And if there, if it's not stated expressly in the JPA agreement, if there's an opportunity to grow capacity to clarify the various roles and responsibilities of this independent entity and the county itself, when we're doing contract approvals through an MOU or other vehicle, I would love to see that. So, that's just my comment. If I could have a chance and just beg for some time to go back and look at the original JPA agreement, to make sure those roles and responsibilities are well-defined, including conflict of interest provisions, I'd appreciate that time, but I would fully understand if the board wants to move forward.
Okay. Do we have any comments from the public? Anybody in the Zoom room? Okay. We'll bring it back to the board for action.
To approve, A, B, C, D? I would like to move forward. I don't see an issue.
Yep. Go ahead.
There's no personal benefit, financial gain to the individuals here. This is a, this is a decision made between a JPA. There's no personal gain there, and then this is a decision to do a contract with the JPA, which is not, again, a personal benefit or financial gain. So I'm perfectly fine with moving forward.
Vice Chair Simon?
Yeah. No more discretion, I'm prepared to move forward with the motion. I motion to approve partnership agreement between the County of Lake, the Lake County Risk Reduction Authority, Joint Powers Authority, and the Lake County Resource Conservation District for the planning for an equitable climate Safe Lake project, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I move to approve grant agreement between the County of Lake and the Governor's Office of the Planning and Research for work performed under the Adaptation Planning Grant Program, and authorize a county administrative officer or designee to act as grant signatories.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I move to approve agreement between the County of Lake and the RRA for services under the Adaptation Planning Grant Program, not to exceed $52,083, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
I move, I move to approve agreement between the County of Lake and the RCD for services under the Adaptation Planning Grant Program, not to exceed $161,183, and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you, Terry, this is so exciting.
Thank you.
Great. Get started on this. Game-changing for the county, and all of our communities. Okay. We can go to calendars now? We will get 5.3 and 5.4 at a later date. So who's ready to start with calendars?
I will.
Go.
Yes. So, sorry, I'm, now I'm, there, ah, let me go to, well, I guess I wasn't ready, but I.
I'll go for it. I'll go for it. Real quick, I want to ask Supervisor Simon, because it's going to happen in your district, I've been enjoying going to the Lake County Chiefs Association, since there's a lot of different things that I've been doing. This time, it's in Middletown, just looking for your permission to go ahead and come to that, go to that meeting in your area?
Yep.
All right.
I agree.
Thank you very much. Then I will be at Anderson Ranch for First Five Lake Commission. I will be there as an alternate, but since it's right next door to my next event at four o'clock, I will be at Woodland Community College. I am the host for the new chancellor's introduction to the community, and looking forward to that. Dr. Pan, I just met with him last Friday, looking forward to see what he does as the new Yuba Community College District Chancellor. Then I have a pick count meeting on the 24th after Judge's Breakfast, and also a meeting with Hope Rising. I believe that we will be getting an update. The idea was to look at a transition. I believe there was two opportunities. Right now, it's under Adventist Health, that Hope Rising has gone under, but I know NCO was involved in the conversation, so we'll see what they bring back to us, and let us know what the transition will look like. At this moment, I'm empty on Friday, on the 26th. I am looking forward to the Last Concert in the Park over in the city of Clear Lake, where we're going to have some good old fun from the 80s in our hip-hop scene and R&B scene with Tone Loc and Color Me Bad. That should bring a lot of 40- and 50-year-olds to the park right there. Then.
You have to say that.
And then, meeting with the CAO, nope, never mind, because we do not have a meeting. Let's see, I have a CSAG Board of Directors meeting on that week as well. I am planning to meet with CPUC, and meeting also with a update on programs happening over in the city of Clear Lake, and also meeting with our probation, chief probation officer later on that week to discuss, I believe she only left it at ideas, so I'm very intrigued as to what the ideas will be. But looking forward to that. And then, oh my goodness, I'm just going to stop there, I'm going to have to keep going for a full two and a half weeks. But that is all.
Okay. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes. Just want to cover some of last week. Went to RCRC last Wednesday for the executive meeting, and preparing basically for the annual meeting next month, and I think it's September 20th through 22nd, and preparing the basket for the annual auction at this meeting. So if, I know we've been working on it somewhat, but I'll probably be going to specific businesses as I have last year, and the goal is to attract whoever the auction winner is to Lake County. A lot of the other representatives travel through Lake County, whether it be through 29 or 20, but they, they do come by, and they're always asking about, you know, Canuckdie Harbor, and of course, but I keep reminding them that, you know, there's things going on. But either way, the, last year, one of the retired supervisors, she won the auction, and I know she's been around at a lot of our businesses, or a contractor that's there will do the same thing. So, either or, we'll be coming, putting that together. This last Thursday, Russian River Water Forum, which is basically just a perfunctory meeting of the same stuff, we went on EcoFlight with Cal Wild over Lake Pillsbury on Saturday, myself and Supervisor Sabate and Matthew. It was pretty, it was pretty intriguing. I haven't been on a plane over Lake County like that ever before, so looking at the area of Potter Valley, Lake Pillsbury, Berryas, the Snow Mountain, Hole Mountain, Middle Creek, all of the different areas to get a sense of how the Eel River combines with the Russian River and Van Arsdale, looking at all the sediment and potential discussions of what can be done in that area at a later date. So that was, was, it was pretty fun. So next week, or this week, I'm sorry, I'll be doing some follow-up with some citizens here tomorrow. Thursday, GeoZones meeting in Clear Lake Oaks, AAA after that, and then I'll be going to the Clear Lake Oaks and Glen Haven Business Association. Meeting in Lakeport here with municipality. And then next week, CIA, well, I don't know, CAO meeting, right? Next week?
No.
No? I do have the Farm, Ranch and Rural Federal Advisory Committee ad hoc, which we should be doing the other meeting pretty soon to decide on the letter we'll be sending to Regional Director Regan, or not Regional Director, I'm sorry, Secretary Regan. Thursday, CPUC, I think we're having a meeting with them, trying to hit that, and then right after, going to the Lake County Recreational JPA. Of course, Monday's Labor Day. I didn't have anything listed after that, but I, there's some other things going on, but I'll stop there.
Give it time, give it time. Yeah. So just for clarification, the 29th is the 5th Tuesday, so we don't have a scheduled meeting, but we have a reserved, in case we need a special meeting.
So we don't have to adjourn it? It's just a placeholder? Okay. All right. Looks like First Five tomorrow, thank you for the reminder, it's in Anderson Ranch, right?
Yes.
So I get to take a little drive tomorrow. Thank you for that reminder, so I'll be there as primary. Looks like on Thursday, I'll be attending a cannabis retail webinar being put on by California Cannabis Authority. Also on Friday, they have a virtual board meeting. I know we haven't taken the next step to execute the MOU and do a delegate appointment, but I'm just going to tune in to see how they roll a little bit. Saturday, I'm a little bit old for this, but there will be a youth fishing clinic at Library Park from 9:00 AM to noon, put on by Clear Lake Bass Masters and the Lake County Sheriff's Activity League. So if you know students ages six to 18 who want to dip their line in the water and get a first introduction of fishing, operators are standing by to do that, and that'll be a good event. Again, that's Saturday from 9:00 AM to noon at Library Park. Looks like I won't have a CAO meeting next Monday, but Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council will meet, and I think they're expecting to get some updated information from Water Resources on the various projects. It's been following the bouncing ball a little bit, we had some projects proposed for Scotts Valley proper, but we got some funding for some larger projects that include Scotts Valley. So we're going to get an update on that stuff on Monday, and I think that takes, well, okay, so if we're going to keep going, I don't think anything, but of course, the fair is coming up, so as soon as August 31st, we're going to be spending a lot of time at the fairgrounds, having fun. And that's all I got.
Yeah. So, today's meeting, we'll finish up with that today. I have some projects that I'm working down in South County, obviously with a couple of different agencies, Middletown Arts Center, also our Central Park Agency, looking at some projects, I've been meeting with them. Just recently attended a meeting of Central Park this week, to continue moving those projects forward. Ultimately, too, I don't think I reported at this board level, but there was a multi-use path project that's been going on for quite a long time, South Lake County, the encroachment pitch are done, I'm just waiting for the day for construction to start, so that's a great one, and that is a multi-use path. That was a grant was put together by the Middletown Area Town Hall, the local tribe, Middletown Rancheria, and also the county being the one that's going to operate that through the public works, so.
Is that the one on the highway?
Yeah, it's right on the side, it'll run from Central Park all the way out to, to the casino. It's, you know, we have a lot of folks keeping people safe, it's a multi-use path, give us an opportunity there to not only keep people safe, but also to encourage folks to get out and have a nice, safe walking path from town, which is, which is excellent. And we got quite a few of those, so happy to see that project moving forward, we'll come back and report when the start date happens. Kind of clear the rest of the week, besides the projects moving forward. Ultimate concerns, I'm going out to visit some folks out on Shitty Grove Road, actually on East Road this week, on some current road conditions, I'll be out there visiting them, talk about those issues, and then, you know, we don't have a meeting next week, so we'll try and fill that in with some, some other stuff. Ultimately, sports have kicked off, you had the Clear Lake Soccer League this weekend, looked like a great event that happened, you know, for the kids going there. Football season off running for both the high school and the Pop Warner programs around here, second week for Pop Warner, first week for the high schools, so we'll be doing those. And then on the 31st, I have the State Board of Fire Services, I'll be traveling to Sacramento for that meeting. You know, changes are happening, so in-person meetings are the way to go now, so I'll be traveling over to Sacramento for those meetings, and then back here for the meeting in September.
Soccer opening day was incredible, because I think there's about 200 new kids playing this year. Adventist is a big sponsor, so it was a really fun event. Tomorrow, I've got a gender review, and finally, maybe a minute to catch up on things. Thursday, I'm having a meeting with the Canuckdie Resort staff and our staff, then Law Library, then AAA governing board meeting, and then the Community Resilience Center Planning, which is a standing meeting for every Thursday afternoon. On Friday, I'll be back here for the Zone of Benefit meeting, meeting with clerk, then I'm going to be going and volunteering to help set up for the Blackberry Cobbler Festival, which is on Saturday at Mountain Meadow Venue in Cobb, and it's the third annual event, it's going to be incredible. If you're not going to be there, you're going to be missing out. Sunday, a nothing, that's going to take, Saturday's going to take it all from us, so Sunday, relaxing, Monday, CAO Parker meeting, I think I will probably keep that, because there's some things coming up next week. But wait, she's on vacation, never mind. Tuesday, probably going to be going to Sacramento for the CalFire, I'm sorry, California Wildfire and Forest Resilience Task Force Quarterly meeting. Wednesday, I've got home hardening meeting, meeting with PG&E and staff on underground work on Bottle Rock Road. There's an NCO governing board meeting in the afternoon. Thursday, the 31st, is the big day that the CPUC is coming to have their hearings here in our board chamber, so I will be here all afternoon, meeting with them, and I'm going to have to miss some of my normal Thursday afternoon meetings, but Supervisor Crandall's going to pick up the recreation JPA for me, and then I'm going to go to the Blue Ribbon Dinner at the fair, and then I'll be at the fair on Friday. at the fair, and then I'll be at the fair on Friday, I'm hoping to make the auction Saturday morning, but I think I have a kid with a sporting event, so I may have to miss that, unfortunately, I love going to the auction, and then I'm just looking if there's any big highlights the following week. Finally, having a meeting on Kelseyville Traffic with stakeholders on the 5th. We're gonna have our geothermal meeting on the 7th. What's that?
I didn't have that on there.
I haven't gotten the invite, but I just put it as a placeholder, 1:30 on the 7th.
Okay.
And Community Resilience, then heading to Sacramento again with Supervisor Crandall for the RCRCPG&E CSAC meeting.
Matthew.
And Matthew, yes, Matthew, and then back on September 12th. Okay, so we will take a lunch break, we'll come back at 1:10, wrap up the last two open session items, and will we be having closed session?
Staff's requesting to withdraw the closed session item 8.1.
Okay, we will be withdrawing that then, so no closed session today. All right, we'll see you back at 1:10. Okay, welcome back, we have two items to return to, first one will be 4.1, A, consideration of regional resilience planning grant application, and we've got community development staff, if you want to come on up. Good afternoon, thanks for coming back.
We're ready for any questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Miraya Turner, Community Development Director, I have with us Shannon Walker Smith, our Deputy Administrator.
Okay, any more questions on this grant? Supervisor Sabate?
So two things, one of them, just being picky on this one, says Lake's largest city, 29.4% live in poverty, and then it says the median household income is among the 10th lowest in the state, that's the county, not the city.
Okay.
We're just wondering if we can identify that, because it's, that would not be the correct thing when it comes to the 10th lowest. And then my last part is, so, there's obviously a very specific scope on climate resiliency, but it starts out as just resiliency. Am I supposed to parse out, because I see in your list, you have volcano, you have earthquakes, and on your list of your things that are hazards, and then eventually it says climate change influence or priority hazard on that little matrix that you have, so are you looking at all potential threats, or just climate change threats in this specific ask for the grant?
That table that you're referencing came directly out of the local hazard mitigation plan, just because it asks, the grant asks, how did the community identify the needs and priorities, and so we're referencing these other documents that have already been developed to determine kind of what our priorities are for this application.
Okay, and the reason I bring it up, and I'll just finish my statement, earthquakes have helped build this area, for example, I believe it's the South Lake area, it never existed until the fault cracked and created another basin for the water to flow into, used to flow out towards Ukiah, after earthquakes, it started flowing down Cash Creek, so I think we have the chance for some pretty intense earthquakes, we have been lucky, we have not had that happen, but I feel that it, our housing stock and our infrastructure the way it is, if we did have one, we are woefully unprepared for something large to happen, and I feel like that's missing in there, unless, again, I messed up on the idea of what the scope should be for what's being asked for from the grant, because obviously earthquake is not perfectly aligned with climate change issues, but it is still a resiliency issue that I'm afraid of, like, for example, in Maui, nobody would have really spoken about fire threats on a tropical island, but yet, look what happened, and I fear similar situations for earthquakes if we have something above a six or even more than that, that our infrastructure is very fragile in comparison to where maybe it should be.
Thank you, it's also important to keep in mind that earthquakes are part of the all hazard, excuse me, the all hazard, local hazard mitigation plan too, and so just because we haven't had one recently, or we have just the teeny tiny ones, you know, due to geothermal, it's no reason to not consider the threat and be prepared for it.
So the reason I bring it up is because I didn't see it discussed in any great detail whatsoever in the document that I went through, just wondering if that's something that we can bring up, or is that something already taken care of by other documents that are already being worked on?
I think I could circle back on that and see, relook, I mean, the idea is to pull in the data that currently exists, so that's, that's what that list is based on now, but I can go back to those documents, basically, I got to choose which documents I was gonna pull in the data from, so let me circle back on that.
And of course, that's up to the rest of the board, that's just, those are my comments and on the document.
Obviously, we are an earthquake prone, you know, continuing the conversations, I know we've had some of these conversations at the Risk Reduction Authority also, because we're not only, you know, look, fire has been the big conversation, but all risks, I know the California Earthquake Authority, there's been conversations about reaching out to them for education as we're moving forward, so, yeah, I think a collaborative conversation as we move forward is always needed, because we are, you know, I'm not sure of the year, but we had the Napa earthquake not too long ago, I'm thinking a decade ago, right about?
2014.
Yeah, somewhere in that area, you know, so it obviously brings to light, as you're building structures here in Lake County, to always be aware of that. I can't think of the faults, but I know for my individual tribe, we set on a fault right down, I can't think of the name of it right now, but we are on a fault, so making sure that we understand the vulnerabilities as you're building projects are something we need to look at before. And as we always know, from a risk standpoint, if there is a large event, larger populated areas are gonna be getting the support they need soon, and we need to always be thinking about how we're gonna be resilient here as a small community to survive until the help does come, so I think we'll continue those conversations, at least from my point of view, from the Risk Reduction Authority, this is something we've had conversations about. Sorry, I just jumped in there.
It's okay. Okay, any public comment? Anybody in the Zoom room? Okay. We can bring it back to the board for action?
If I could just add one last thing, I was just scanning through our existing health and safety element, and geologic and seismic hazards are in there, so yes, we will definitely, as we do both this first one, the safety element, as well as the update after the housing element, that will be addressed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, action?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the RRPG application and authorize CDD Director to submit the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and 5.1, approved concession agreement for coffee kiosk services, buy in between the County of Lake and Mixed Lakeport LLC in the amount of $200 per month, and authorize the chair to sign. So we just have one line that's been added for concessionaire shall, in the first paragraph, beginning within 60 days, and then it says, said operation of the kiosk shall exclude any solicitation of any products and services not contemplated under Section 1 of this agreement, and so that is the only change that's been made? Yep, okay, any comments?
I'm good with it.
Okay, any public opinion? Anyone in the Zoom room? Okay, then we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the concession agreement for coffee kiosk services, buy in between the County of Lake and Mixed Lakeport LLC in the amount of $200 per month, and authorize the chair to sign as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, 10 minutes before your inspection.
Awesome.
All right.
That was close.
Thank you for your service.
That was close, you said.
Okay, so as mentioned before, we have no closed session items today, so we will adjourn this meeting.